Okay. I'd like to open the Georgetown Planning Board, January 11th, 2017. Meeting in Memorial Town Hall, third floor. It's about 10 past 7:00. Apologize for the late start. That's on me. So with that, we'll just jump into the minutes. We have minutes that were approved. This is just FYI for you guys. And you can see all of them that have been uploaded to the town website. Tonight, we have February 10th, September 7th, September 28th, October 26th, and December 14th meeting minutes to approve.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February 10th, September 7th, September 28th, October 26th, and December 14th, 2016. With any changes to this?
Second. Motion has been made, and it has been seconded to approve the meeting minutes of February 10th, September 7th, September 28th, October 26th, December 14th. Any discussion? Anyone have any items they want to go over?
Other than the December 14th, we have Bob Watts as being both present and absent at the same time, so.
He's a magic man. There I was. Gary was gone.
All right. So other than that change.
Okay. Anyone else?
I don't think Gary was at that one either, was he? I think I have him absent, too.
You got him there in October.
To December 14th.
September 28th.
I made a mistake. I just did, I know he wasn't there, I just didn't delete it.
So I guess not hearing any other changes. No more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four yes, one absent. The approval of minutes, January 25th, that'll be our next planning board meeting, and that's also just an FYI for the board to let them know that there's about six meeting minutes to be updated, plus or minus six. We're not quite sure right now, but plus or minus six. So Andrea has gone from zero to 90 in six seconds, so.
So six are remaining?
We're getting pretty good. Plus or minus.
Okay.
Yeah. We've caught up a lot.
Tesla of administrators.
Tesla.
The Maserati.
There you go.
I like it. Okay. Moving on to correspondence, and then just for the public, we have vouchers after correspondence, and then we have public hearings, Bailey Lane first, Georgetown Plaza second. We have new business friendly 40B, the Allen Olson's project, and then we have some old business with Healthy Farms. So going back to correspondence, the only thing that I wanted to mention about that was the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, and just to remind Matt, I was reminded that he's the alternate.
Oh, okay.
And while we don't have the town planner, if you can make their next meeting on behalf of the planning board, that would be great, and if you can't, the world's gonna keep turning. So moving on to vouchers. Unless anybody had anything on the correspondence.
Who appointed me on that one?
I think it was Bob.
He must not have been there.
I think it was Bob that.
You mean the clerk. That would be me. Yeah, how did that happen? I don't know.
Thank you to whoever that was. We appreciate it.
You're a fine American.
So on vouchers, we have one, two, three, four, five staples. H.L. Graham, Boston Systems, BSC Group in north of Boston. What I'd like to suggest is take the first five, as they are all staples, and if we don't already have a total, if somebody has a calculator, I can make a total, and we can do them all together, or if the board wants, you can do each one separately. So on the vouchers.
Somebody gives me a total, I'll make the motion.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just waiting for the total to come, and then we'll get a yes, and then we'll need a motion.
I came up with 746.31. Do you want anyone else to do it? Should I do it second? Do it my time?
Motion to approve the five Staples vouchers, and the approximate amount is $746.31 for the total, subject to clarification on any changes in the calculation.
Second. Matt, can I have that number again, please?
746.31.
So the motion has been made, and it's been seconded to approve the five vouchers to Staples for planning offices, for planning office supplies. Those five vouchers in the total amount of $746.31. Any discussion on any of the individual vouchers?
Just one quick question. There was a really expensive chair that was purchased. I mean, that's ours now, I assume. There's no, yeah, okay.
As far as I'm aware, is that chair still in the planning office? I hope you're using it.
No, I have one.
So we got two, huh?
Use them every other week or something. Rotate your chairs. What was the number you came up with?
746.31.
746.31.
Yep.
I concur.
So it's.
We do?
So any discussion on any of those individual vouchers, other than Matt's questions there?
Sure.
Okay, seeing no more discussion on those five vouchers.
I do hope Andrea, you're using the footstool.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four turned on that, one absent. We need some signatures here. I'll sign at the end. 746.
These guys?
Yeah, actually, if you want to start them down, you're in there. So then, we have four more vouchers. There's H.L. Graham, Healthy Farms, $535. I have a motion.
I move the board approve payment to H.L. Graham Associates, $535 for work on Healthy Farms.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the voucher to H.L. Graham Associates for Healthy Farms, Inc., in the amount of $535. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four yes, one absent. Next voucher is the premium laptop. I have a motion for that invoice.
I move the board approve payment to Boston Systems and Solutions, $2,230 for the purchase of a laptop and Microsoft Office.
Second for discussion.
Motion has been made, and it has been seconded to approve the Boston Systems, or the town planner laptop, in the amount of $2,230. Any discussion?
It's too late for this.
Really?
Yeah, we got the computer. Okay. Well, it is what it is.
I hope you're enjoying its use. I hope, that's all. Hope someone's.
Any more discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? Aye. Four yes, one absent. Two more vouchers. BSC Group, peer review for 6474 East Main Street, in the amount of $3,666.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the voucher for BSC Group in the amount of $3,660 for peer review, site design and traffic study of the East Main?
Yeah. Have a second?
Second.
So a motion has been made, and it has been seconded to approve the voucher for the BSC Group for the Georgetown 6474 East Main Street project for initial peer review of site design and traffic study, in the amount of $3,666. Any discussion from the board?
My only just comment on this is that the invoice is a little, it's back to those invoices that we're not really thrilled with, that I didn't really describe what work was actually completed.
Well, actually, that's a good point in that this is a percentage of contract, and I wasn't, I didn't even, I didn't pick that up. We don't have a contract with them for a signed, for an agreed-upon amount, right?
No, not that I know of.
So I don't know where they come up with these numbers.
60%.
60% complete. Contract amount, 3650.
Did they have a contract with the applicant? We can ask.
No, they shouldn't have a contract. That's, that comes through our M account.
Can I ask, can I ask also what impact this is gonna have on the balance of the account?
Yeah, well, that's a great question. That was the second part. I'm not sure where we stand on the balance.
Yeah. The last I knew, and I need to get an update on this, but they did give us a $3,000 deposit, so we don't have enough to cover that, but I thought if you signed it tonight, and we asked them for another check, and we got it deposited, instead of waiting the two more weeks to process it.
I.
Whatever you want to do.
What I would rec, what I would suggest to the board is to table this and get the additional money, and also have this bill revised to reflect, it's not a percent of contract, it's, I'm assuming it's an hourly contract.
Perhaps I'm missing this, but what meeting were they at?
They're here tonight.
Not with their.
I think it's this, the implication is, it's this piece down.
Services rendered through 12/9/2016. So this is for services rendered through 12/9.
This is this memo from 11/23 from BSC Group, where they're reviewing the trip generation processing letter.
I think we should get a little clarification on this.
I do, too. So can we do that? Okay, so we're gonna table that one. Okay. And then the last voucher, and then we'll move into public hearings, is north of Boston Media Group for $1,464.50 for legal ads, and, yes, please.
I did my very best in your supplement. You guys can go to your supplement. And I highlighted in yellow, and I'm just gonna walk you through it, okay? I had to research this bill. This is a $1,464.50, and they shut us off. So the first thing we're gonna see is the total bill, and it says, under the vendor name, north of Boston, legal ads, I will provide the breakdown in the supplement. So this is all we have.
Okay.
Okay? And there's the bill. 1464 is the next page. So first page, here we go. This is the one that's ready to pay. Okay, so it'll be the July 13th meeting, for 227.50. Does everybody have that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so maybe this is ready to sign right here. So this was when that a fee wasn't collected by the town planner, and there wasn't ad put in the paper, and then it's kind of back and forth discussion when the applicant withdrew, how to pay for it. Right now, I just charge it to the planning board account, but if you want to try to charge it somewhere else.
Is this also the, is north of Boston cut off until this gets paid?
Yeah.
This is that account, so they're not advertising anymore until we get paid, and so what I would suggest for 227.50 is that the planning board authorize payment, and we may never see it from the applicant, and understand that, but we can certainly continue to try to pursue the applicant, but we need to get the ability to advertise back on.
Why, I have a question.
Yeah.
Why are we going through all of these votes again when we already voted for this? Some of these are repetition. You know, it seems like.
I don't have that.
We're going around again.
We, all I have is the north of Boston collections calling the planning office.
Yeah, cool.
So, and very little time to do research, so I'm just trying to get the easiest ones that are the most clear for me.
I know.
Paid up.
We haven't, we haven't approved this payment before.
We had a whole list, such as this.
Yeah.
And there was, you know, how many legal ads have we been using? I mean, they all sound familiar to me. I don't know about the rest of you guys, but it seems like we voted on this when Heidi was here.
Well, they haven't been paid, so I checked with the accounting, they have not been paid. They were not ever put into the accounting, just to be paid, they're not paid.
Well, probably not, but we voted on this, you know? This is like second round of.
But we didn't, I'm sorry, but if we didn't sign voucher, then we might have voted on it, but it doesn't matter, we got to sign, sign the voucher, right?
That is correct. You do have to sign the voucher. I guess what I would, is whether we have or haven't been till, you know, if this is the second time going around it, on it, I don't recall. I do recall talking about a number of ads, but I don't recall approving this particular invoice, to just, nothing to be heard by voting again.
No, it's just, it's time consuming, you know?
But this needs to get submitted to accounting, our rules get paid.
Sure.
You need to sign it, and it gets submitted, and no matter what you vote on, if you don't, sign and put it through the process.
I think we could make, you know, when we have the time to set aside planning, we should only be able to reach the voucher and a vote, one shot. We shouldn't prepare, a vote to prepare a voucher, and then two weeks later, we get the voucher maybe, and then we sign it and vote again.
I agree, and so if.
Just to streamline it.
I agree, and so if we did do that, you know, the person that could answer why we did it before and didn't finish signing them would be Heidi, but she's no longer here, so. So let's put that to bed and move forward.
Would everybody be okay with me just making a motion to approve the 1464? Do we need to hear each individual one? I'm perfectly comfortable if you.
Some I haven't finished the research on, so I gave you the ones that I know which account to charge them to, like Bailey Lane has an M account, so this one's going to the planning board account. That's the tricky part, so.
Okay, so.
You need to, you need to authorize where to, where to charge it, the accounting can't decide for you.
Okay, okay. So let's just stick, let's just then stick the course and.
And approve.
Approve this one, and then we'll take the next one and direct where it goes.
So this is the 227.
So need a motion?
Motion to approve the voucher for 227.50, is that the correct one?
Yeah.
To north of Boston.
For the July 13th.
For the July 13th legal ad.
There's only one signature, Pedro. And will that satisfy equal tribute?
No.
Well, that'll, that'll satisfy $227 worth.
Right, but it's not, they're not.
I have more to pay.
They're not gonna give us.
So the next two I'm not prepared to say they're right or wrong, or whatever, I just want you to know they're kind of outstanding there. Then becomes a Bailey Lane, the Bailey Lane OSRD, it wasn't advertised twice, I gave you a copy of the public hearing where it was advertised in Georgetown, I gave you a copy of the bill. So this bill is accurate?
Okay, I apologize. I was trying to track something, and would you please go back?
Sure. So there should be a cover sheet for Bailey Lane OSRD. Sorry, it's so confusing.
Got it. It's not, it's not.
So there's a November 29th and a December 6th advertisement.
Yep.
It's 505.
Yep.
I put the posting in here, so it really did happen. I verified it happened. Here's the bill from the East Tribune, and that's that.
Okay.
It's real.
So that one?
It's not been paid.
And it's not been paid, and.
So now I have to paying 700 something to them, 750.
Do we have money from them in an account?
Yes, and that's where it's charged to, that M account.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Okay.
Good question.
So looking for a motion on the $505.
Second.
Motion has been made, and it to approve the payment.
That's it.
To north of Boston for Bailey Lane OSRD advertising in the amount of $505, that's for both November 29th and December 26th. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that's half of what they're owed, though. Is that gonna be enough to get us back in their good graces?
Yeah. And then at the next meeting, I'll have the next two researched and just clarified and make sure that it's right.
And so will that bring us current, if those are current?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can close out this agenda item of north of Boston Media Group, and we have a balance running, but at the next meeting, you'll have that there.
Yes.
Perfect.
Solve it then.
Excellent.
Good start, thank you.
Very good start.
Excellent start, yeah.
So what do we have for signatures here to pass on?
You've signed this.
Okay, that goes to you and sign.
This is the one we're gonna hold off.
We're gonna hold, so I'm gonna give this back. I need to sign this.
You need to sign this one, and you've already signed this one. This can go right to Tilly.
That goes to Tilly. That's yours also, Tilly.
Mr. Chairman, what we're doing with signatures, can I ask a quick question, please? From what I understand, on the old business, the Healthy Farms, we only need to do a vote to authorize Larry Graham to do a final review?
Uh, yeah, I think that's right.
Would you be open to hearing that out of order? Or it's a fairly.
Yeah, I think, I think so, Matt. I don't think there was anything else to. I just wanna, I'm gonna give these to.
Thank you.
Now, maybe giving you that, and this is, whoops, we haven't signed that one yet.
Right.
So we're giving that back to you.
Just off.
And then there are these here that we have signed.
Did you get that one? I'm gonna turn it over.
Did I miss that signature?
Oh, no.
I think I did. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, that's yours, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, this is good.
Great, progress.
And Andrea, before we go on, so, 'cause we just cracked into the supplemental package, so the last two items that are in the supplemental package, there's a Healthy Farms letter, and there's a memo from Janet.
Yes.
Those are the last two items, right? Okay. Okay, so if the board is in agreement, just to take care of Healthy Farms, and so that they don't have to sit till the end, it is really just a vote, but to move them up in the agenda. Is the board okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Hey, Paul, how are you?
Happy New Year, everybody.
Hey, you too.
Sorry to take your time for such a small thing, but we're nearing the end of our construction project. I have a sign-off sheet for most of the departments, the conservation commission. Steve opted not to sign till the planning board signs, because she doesn't sign out of order. I think there's a correspondence from him that I gave to you folks. From a building department point of view, we were hoping to have a signature from the electric department yesterday, but because of the snow, it's gonna happen tomorrow, and I'm here to ask if you guys would vote on sending Mr. Larry Graham out, making sure that all the special conditions are met, parking lots, signage, fence.
Lighting, the whole.
We got lighting, the rain gardens, which to my surprise, really actually totally work. So they totally work.
Okay.
So, you know, we did the paving, and I think the place is looking pretty spiffy. Also, once again, extend the invitation to come visit us.
Thank you.
And so that's where we're at.
Okay.
Great.
So if I can have a motion, then we can discuss.
I move the board instruct Larry Graham, Graham Associates, to do a final inspection for us at Healthy Farms, at its earliest availability.
Second. So a motion has been made, and it has been seconded to authorize Larry Graham, the town's technical review agent, for his final review of the Healthy Farms project. Any discussion? The only discussion that I have is just to let you know that the lighting is a big question mark for me. I recall what we talked about was just remembering the town ordinance for lighting and shielding of fixtures, and I don't think that has taken place, and I think the LED lighting that has been used is almost being used in a floodlight manner.
Okay.
So I just share that with you.
I'll have my engineer come out one night and take a look at it, and we'll do, we'll try to have something done before Larry comes out.
Okay. So that was the only thing I wanted to mention.
Although Larry, is Larry up and running again, or, because I heard he had knee surgeries?
Uh, no say. I had no idea.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I heard he had.
I hope he's okay.
A knee surgery or two knees.
When, when you, well, after we vote, so.
He has it, isn't he?
Any more discussion?
Yeah, so somebody else might have to go out. But I know Larry likes to come out around the night, because he lives around here, so he does have to make a special trip. So now, I met, I met him twice, and he's a really good guy, so.
Yes. Okay, so any more discussion? So no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So four yes, one absent, and could you just double check and let us know next time? I'm curious if Larry's okay.
Yes.
Okay, and I'll take care of the lights.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so we're gonna go back to the public hearing for Bailey Lane OSRD. Need a motion to open the public hearing, please?
Make a motion. Open the Bailey Lane OSRD.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made, and it has been seconded to open, reopen the Bailey Lane OSRD, OSRD application, which is being continued from December 14th, 2016, and what we'll do is the applicant will, a few minutes to sort of refresh people's mind in an overview kind of way, to Bailey Lane, and then we'll go to the public for any questions or concerns, and then we'll bring it back to the planning board.
We are opening concept plan, right? We're listening to a concept plan hearing.
This, this is the plan that they have presented, the OSRD concept plan, correct?
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening. Rich Williams with Williamson Sprages. With me is Jeff Ruda with Science Development and Permitting. They're the applicant for the project, and I'm sure, as you all are aware, we're back here as part of, or the result of an appeal process. So this, this plan and this application is an identical plan and process to the prior application that was filed and deliberated on by, by this board. We filed the same material, with the exception that this plan, the concept plan that's before you, incorporates two minor changes that were asked for at the end of the process, at, for the last public hearing process, and that was removing the parking area at the start, at the trailhead, and that was a discussion with the neighbors and with the board, and it was decided that that should be eliminated. We did that, and adding one piece of signage. We did that and adding one, uh, piece of signage where, where the trail, um, coming off lot, um, four and five meets the, um, the new trail. So those are the, the two differences. Other than that, um, that plan is the same, identical to what was deliberated on at the last, at the last, um, hearing. And, um, just to back up a little bit, the, it's an OSRD process. We provided a yield plan that, um, was reviewed by Larry Graham. We've got testing for this. And we've shown that five lots can be built here in a conventional fashion, looking like this. And then we went, went through a process with the planning board to discuss, um, you know, what, what alternatives, development alternatives, it would be here. Uh, this was the plan that we landed on. It is, uh, two lots that are accessed from a court, uh, in this location, and three lots that are, um, accessed from, from Bailey Lane. Bailey Lane itself will, uh, will get improvements, widening, uh, some drainage improvements and, um...
Grading and pavement.
Right, grading and pavement and, and drainage. And that allows us to, this development allows us to have, um, a, a large area of open space, three hundred and sixteen thousand square feet, um, adjacent to what is already undeveloped and, um, uh, some of which is, is owned by the town of Georgetown. So it, um, we think is a, is a good, a great use for an open space project. So again, it's, it's identical to the, to the, the prior plan, and if there's questions, I, I'm happy to answer them. Uh, if there's more information that you want than that, then I'm happy to go through it as well.
So, John, don't hesitate to correct me if I misspeak, um, if, uh, if I say something that's not accurate. So the board, just as a refresher, the board once before voted, um, were, were you here at that meeting or were?
I believe so.
You, you were here, so?
I think Har- Harry, he was...
No, no, I was not.
You, you were here for the vote, but you had to recuse yourself 'cause you had missed, uh, two prior meetings.
Correct, got it. So, um...
So, I'm, I'm sorry. Sorry to correct you, but there was, there was only one meeting that was missed. And it was, it was a meeting that there was no information provided, so that, that's...
That's why we're back.
That's why we're back.
Yeah, I think I missed, I, Matt, I believe I missed the meeting when the vote was taken.
I'm, I'm pretty sure what I remember is, is, uh, the three of us were here and Harry was here. And Harry and I had a discussion after the meeting and I, and you were not here.
I was denied the vote.
So, so, so this is just, so this is just reminder that, that that was the position of the board, uh, where we voted at that point in time, Matt, myself, and Tilly voted yes for this plan. Um, and Harry voted no. And we have before us the plan, which is the same plan that we have already seen once before, that we've already voted on. I would also add for the public, uh, FYI, the process goes from here, if the board approves this concept plan, into, um, a subdivision plan where the series of drawings that come back are at a technical level that get reviewed at that level.
Correct, a definitive plan.
Correct. So you will find, for example, on the definitive plan, um, if an issue comes up where there is a planting buffer that is required between, uh, something and, and existing condition, that's when we will be addressing those issues. It's not now. This is just the approval of the concept plan. So that is, I'm just sharing that with the public, that you're gonna have that opportunity to talk about those at that point in time as well. So, that's just an overview, so I, I, I do wanna go to the public now for, um, if they have any questions at this stage. Please introduce yourself for the record and...
Oh, sorry. I'm Terry O' Bash at thirty-three Bailey. Uh, my house is the one right next to the paper road. Um, what happened to the sketch that was out there that put the road beyond the Natali's house?
Can you, can you point on the plan that, which is fine?
So this is where I live.
Yeah?
One of the past meetings, we had several different drawings, and one of the drawings was, the road was going to be over here. Everybody seemed to like it. Especially me.
There was a plan that had, um, had a road over there like that.
Yes. That did not get approved?
No.
Wasn't invited to that meeting, I guess.
Well, I, I don't recall that we approved or disapproved that plan. I, I think it was, there were options that were presented and correct me if I'm wrong, at the la- at the, at, at one of the last meetings, you came back and said, here's the plan we wanna go with.
Correct.
That is correct. I don't believe all the lots perked on that, uh, road that came in like that. I think that was the issue there.
So... So there was never a meeting where that plan was thumbs up or thumbs down? That, that didn't happen? To the best of, I'm, I'm pretty sure that's correct.
I didn't understand what you said, so it wasn't feasible to put the road over there, why?
Because we couldn't, we could not get perks on all five lots doing it that way. We can get perks on the conventional plan, which would use up all of the land and would put in a full roadway next to your house. This one will put in more, how wide is that, Rich? I think it's gonna be...
What, the court?
Yes.
Um, eighteen feet?
Yeah, so it's a, much smaller than what the conventional would do.
It's basically a driveway.
Yeah, it's basically a driveway.
And you're gonna leave trees up on either side?
Yeah.
Um, I would, we're gonna, I would...
Let me, so, I, I defer to the chairman there. I think when we get into the definitive process, uh, we have a landscape architect, and he will work closely with this board and with you, so that whatever we remove, uh, we have, we have the same philosophy as you. You don't wanna see us and we don't wanna see you. So it's, it's beneficial to both of us to have a good barrier. Trees make good neighbors.
So is this eighteen feet?
Yes, that's the pavement width. Whereas, you know, if we did a full-blown road, it'd be, uh, thirty feet.
Can I approach this one?
So, um, well, I just wanna wait though until if, if this woman is through?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Could you introduce yourself, please?
Sorry, Jane Gagny, fifty Bailey Lane.
Yep.
Whereabouts is your house, ma'am?
Um, I am the very back lot, down here.
Yep.
No, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, over here. Us right here. So this would be the same. So, yeah. So it's still going directly across. Okay, so I assume once the definitive plan, I think you all called it, we discussed noise, issues around blasting, issues around that?
Yes. Yes. Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing no one else from the public, bringing it back to the board. Does the board have any discussion they want, or, um, I'm, I'm prepared to vote? Tilly?
Yeah.
Is there anything else?
My issue all along has been that Bailey Lane to, I want that to be accepted. So you're gonna bring it right up to requirements.
We're gonna do that in the definitive process.
That's the main thing I'm looking for.
That road's a, that road's a mess. We should, we should've repaired it all by now.
Right.
So we, we look forward to bringing it up to, uh, town standards.
That's still, okay, good, that's my issue.
Okay. So, so...
Unless there's any other discussion?
Need a motion?
Okay. If anybody has any thing you wanna add, please do so, but I'm gonna make a motion to approve the, uh, OSRD concept plan as presented at the, uh, the January eleventh, twenty seventeen, meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second. Last one, one more thing I forgot.
Discussion, yeah. So, uh, motion has been made and it has been seconded to approve the Bailey Lane OSRD, uh, OSRD concept plan. Is there a new date on it?
Is a date on that, yeah. February tenth, two thousand sixteen.
Dated February tenth, two thousand sixteen.
Take it back.
Hang on.
That's the last revision date, what it is, it's a planned date and then that's the last revision date.
Yeah, February tenth, two thousand sixteen.
So last, last revision.
Okay, I just have one question.
Discussion, yeah.
Okay, discussion. Is that, that other question I always had, your national heritage? I was looking for that form that you get from...
Sure, we'll turn that in with the definitive.
Yeah, there's a permit process that occurs there. We've had discussions with them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're, we know that we're in it, we've had discussions. They prefer this development. We've shown them the options they, they would like us to stay away from, the area back here and back here.
Right. Um, so are you gonna have a line on your definitive to show where it is, where that line is?
We have to decide if we're doing a conventional or an OSRD before we can finalize with national heritage.
So you're...
But you will be providing
We have to.
The national heritage.
We have to. We don't have a choice in the matter.
Okay.
It's, yeah.
Is this about the turtles, okay?
I'm not sure, but...
Yes, yeah.
Yes, there's a lot of them.
They never harmed you.
Making sure I knew what we're talking about.
They're good.
Was there anything else to it?
That's, that's all.
'Cause that will be addressed at the, at the next round. It has to be addressed then, that is the time it gets addressed.
Okay, great. Those were my two.
Okay, thank you.
So, seeing no more discussion, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So four yes, one absent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
So you will need a decision to be drafted on that. Just citing the criteria, the board should probably vote on that decision, obviously, when you sign it and file with the town clerk. Because there hasn't been any, any discussion at this point as to satisfying their criteria in the special permit. You're just gonna outline that in the decision and then vote on the draft decision.
So what John was just saying is that in drafting a decision, and John, because we're shorthanded, is that something you can draft for us?
Yeah, it'd be helpful to me if you could send me, um, Andrew could send me a template of one, um, the most recent OSRD that you did, decision. I'll use that as my basis and then...
Would that...
I'm sorry, that would work. Forgive my ignorance here, and this may be a terribly ignorant question, but is it? Doesn't the decision get drafted after the definitive is filed?
No, it's actually two steps here. It couldn't, you can do them together, but you can do it. Special permit followed by the filing of it.
This is a decision to accept this, um, this, um...
This is this approach.
It's actually a grant of a special permit. So this is a special permit decision like any other special permit decision. In other words, if somebody comes in for a used special permit, this is a, the use here is the OSRD plan.
So it was an ignorant question, my apologies, I guess.
No, no, not, not at all.
Yeah, not really, no.
It's, it's the bylaw, honestly, it's not...
Are you clear on, on that, Andrea?
I'm just gonna have to look in, in our files
Yep.
under the subdivisions and what we have.
And look, and that's, that's all?
Just do some research.
And just do some research?
Off the top of my head, which, which we must have one.
Tomorrow, in a fresh day, it'll all...
Yeah, it will.
Yeah.
Andrea, if not, um...
You probably could use the same one we have before, right?
Well, yes, except that the only reasons in there, the only thing it talks about is Harry's reasons for denying it, because that was, it was a denial decision, so...
That we wouldn't want to say.
No, you...
We'd wanna go around that again.
If you don't have an OSRD decision, um, any similar special permit. I don't know how many you've had, that's what I don't know. Bylaw hasn't been in place that long, so...
And that'll, and then you and I, we can just talk and, uh, you remind me, I'll remind you to make sure we get one to John. And if we don't, we'll let him know we can't find one and then he will...
We also have a whole template folder.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, it's gonna be short.
Yeah.
No, yeah, exactly. And you have thirty days, by the way, according to the bylaw, to get this decision done, so...
Would you please make a note on that? We have thirty days from this to...
And on the calendar, too?
Yes, please.
From today?
From today, right.
Okay. So that takes care of Bailey Lane and Healthy Farms and the next public hearing. John, I think you're free to go.
I don't have any applications before you, so...
No. All right.
Quickly before I get a question.
So we're going to move to Georgetown Plaza at the applicant's...
He wants to stay for the lift, maybe he would like this.
The what?
The forty B for lift.
Oh, boy.
Oh, that, yeah.
You could give me a chance.
You wanna check how it work?
Who's, who's the associate?
Uh, I don't even, I didn't recognize her name.
Um, Kim?
Amy, Amy?
Amy.
Amy.
Amy Kizwick.
Amy Quest.
Quest.
Queston?
Queston.
Queston.
Um...
Chip, oh, really?
So, uh, we need to have a motion to reopen the hearing.
I make a motion to reopen the hearing for, uh, what's the address? An East Main Street, forty-one, is it?
Sixty-four to seventy-four.
Sixty-four, seventy-four.
Second. Motion has been made and it has been seconded to reopen the public hearing for Georgetown Plaza, sixty-four, seventy-four, uh, West Main Street.
East Main Street.
East Main Street, excuse me, continued from December fourteenth, two thousand sixteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, John.
Night, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, we'll, we'll go to the applicant first and then anyone in the audience and pu- in the public, and then we'll bring it back to the board, so with that...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, other members of the board. For the record, John Smolak, former Smolak and Vaughn attorney for the applicant, Mr. Realty Trust. Uh, with me this evening, uh, to my left is Chris Spradus, William Spradus, our, our project engineer. Also with us, uh, this evening is, uh, Jim Clifford, the director of real estate for NGP Management, on behalf of the applicant. And then lastly, uh, Paul Fergal of Tiananbahn, our project traffic engineer. To the extent that, you know, you have any questions with respect to traffic, uh, he is here this, this evening. And, uh, since we haven't been before the board since, I think, uh, the October twelfth, uh, meeting, what I'd like to do is very briefly summarize where we were initially. And, uh, just by way of background, as you see the site plan to your left, uh, the site, uh, is the Georgetown Plaza, uh, which is approximately two point six six acres in size, uh, located within the residential, uh, the RA zoning district. Uh, the site, can you?
Oh, sorry. I wasn't sure.
They, unfortunately, it needs to come this way and then the TV is...
Oh, okay, thank you.
So as we had discussed at the last, uh, meeting, the site has been used for a variety of, uh, non-residential uses since the fifties and early sixties. And is the subject of multiple, uh, variances and findings by the zoning board of appeals, uh, which are in the materials that you received. Uh, the site currently is improved by a nineteen thousand, six hundred and seventy square foot, uh, building. Uh, as part of this filing, that building is not changing in terms of size or, or, uh, any difference in terms of square footage. And our application is, uh, simply this, uh, where, uh, what we're looking to do is to add additional parking, uh, to accommodate the vacant space that remains in the property. We currently have sixty-two parking spaces on site. And so we're, uh, adding additional parking, uh, that's identified on the site plan. Uh, in addition to the parking spaces, what we're also doing is we're, uh, adding additional stormwater improvements, uh, because to the rear of the site, uh, is the, is the brook, which is considered river under the Wetlands Protection Act. And so, uh, what we're doing is undertaking an extensive landscape, re-landscaping, uh, along that area. And, uh, adding, uh, additional porous pavement materials, uh, to the rear of site, uh, simply because that's, that area of the property has been used for years for parking and for access. Is, is currently gravelled and it gets rutted over the winter months. And so, uh, I think it makes sense, uh, to also as part of this process is to improve that, that parking and access area. So you minimize the migration of, of, uh, mud and other debris from the site, uh, over into the, uh, Wetlands Resource Areas through, uh, stormwater management techniques that Chris will discuss. So, um, with that said, uh, again, I, I wanted to mention that, uh, the number of spaces we're adding is, is a total of twenty-eight parking spaces. And, um, currently there's approximately seven thousand square feet remaining, uh, to be, to be leased. But, uh, based on the parking calculations today, we only have approximately two spaces remaining for that seven thousand square feet. So, so we really need to, um, increase that parking area or to formalize that parking area, I should say. Um, and, uh, so since our, our last meeting, uh, we have received, uh, in addition to the board's input, uh, which was very helpful, uh, because at, at that time, as you may recall, we received a laundry list of ideas and, and comments on the plans themselves. In addition, we've received a peer review comment letter from BSC as well as comments from the various departments. And so this evening, although we haven't revised the plans, uh, in, in response to those comments, what we wanted to do is have, uh, Chris Barages run you through some of the highlights of those changes. And then formalize our comments and hopefully come to some solution on, um, on most if not all these issues.
I don't wanna do that tonight to try to come to solution on those.
Right.
This is the first time the board's having the opportunity to hear from the technical review agent.
Okay.
And so the board needs some time to think on that versus trying to then get the information for the first time, then get into dialogue with you about the design solutions, and you don't have plans in front of us and make decisions.
Sir, fair enough, and, and that's the reason why we didn't put together a formal comment letter at this time. That's where you're expected to have additional input.
Okay. The, is BSC here? Could you introduce yourself for the record and perhaps?
Dominic Rinaldi with BSC Group. Um, as, as John mentioned, we prepared, uh, actually a couple of peer review letters. One, permanent focus on the site, and one, um, that was strictly focused on the generation.
What I think would be.
Go through the highlights.
If you would, if you could, if you could hi, if you could, uh, present what, you know, what the, what the highlights of the findings, that would be helpful.
Uh, I guess I'll start with the, the traffic side. It's, um, a little simpler. Um, there's a memo from, uh, Joanna Cavallari of our office, uh, dated November twenty-third, twenty sixteen. Really just a few items that are primarily mainly down to it, um, dotting eyes at proximity. On the whole, the, um, the letter by Time Bond from methodology and standard practice was, was fine. Um, a couple of items we just maybe like to take a, a little bit of additional look at. Um, one is.
Would you, would you be so kind as to come up here and sit here?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Nowhere to sit.
You're part of our team.
Um, so the first item is, uh, when they did, it's, first two items are sort of related. When they did the trip generation numbers, they used, um, IT land use codes for the various uses in the plaza as well as, um, you know, for the projections on the empty space. And one of the things that they did was they used, for the Domino's Pizza, they used a, uh, a code for, uh, fast food restaurant without a drive-through window. We maybe like to see them redo the Domino's numbers. Um, that land use code results in a certain number of peak AM trips. And Domino's isn't open during the peak AM hours, so it, it sort of skews those numbers. Um, it, in reality, it's gonna skew them in, in current and proposed, but just to, to sort of make, make everything as, as sort of, we'll call it, as accurate as possible and, and whether that's, if there are numbers available from other Domino's pizzas or similar numbers like that, that, you know, some sort of empirical numbers, or i- is there another land use code that maybe fits better? Sort of expanding on that, and it might make that first point moot if they do the second part, which is, um, where there, you know, this isn't a whole new plaza, there's, there's existing uses there is, is maybe rather than for the existing trips, using the land use codes and the projections, maybe actually getting counts, rail counts at the driveways. Um, and then seeing how those match up versus the projections. Obviously, you know, you have to use the projections for the space that's not currently occupied because, um, you don't necessarily, you know, you don't, you don't have that.
Can I push it along?
Sure.
What about our zoning that requires, uh, does our zoning meet what you're referring to now?
This, this I, ITE, does it?
Well, your zoning for this use doesn't.
Is it contradicting anyway?
No, 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 no. When you, when, um, you know, your requirements for, for, um, traffic studies and whatnot, I, I believe specifically, go, go with the IT method. And that's, and this methodology, this is exactly how they did it, is exactly how you'd do it. If this was a whole new plaza.
Right.
You'd absolutely use land u, the, the land use codes because.
This is how you do it.
There'd be nothing there, but whereas, you know, however much of it is currently occupied, you know, we think it, it kinda makes everything a little more accurate to, if they could get traffic counts.
It doesn't conflict with our zoning and is the methodology used.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Uh, one thing, and I think it's probably an easy one, is, um, so in, when they talked about the parking requirements in the, in the memo, they, they went through a, a series of different u, potential uses for the, the currently empty space. And determined that in all of those scenarios, under the required parking, under zoning, you'd come to at most the ninety spaces that they're proposing and in some cases less. Um, you know, we'd just like to, I guess, request something informal saying that these are sort of, we'll call them the worst case, there's not some other use for that currently empty space that would potentially require a denser parking count that would maybe kick it over ninety spaces. And just a verification of that. Um, and the last item is, um, when they, again, talking about parking, they went into some, uh, discussion on shared parking. And just sort of the way they determine the shared parking, it's the easiest way to explain it, is sort of, they talked about shared parking along the lines of, um, you know, potentially s, someone coming into the site, parking, going to physical therapy, and then before they leave, going to Dunkin' Donuts. So it sort of gets into this sequential, um, versus simultaneous trips. So that's, while that is two uses, it's really one trip. Um, whereas, you know, an easier way to, I guess, to look at shared parking is, on a site like this, if, if that new space became maybe a restaurant that's open for dinner only, you know, the physical therapy facility is closed by the time that place opens, so they don't have the overlapping s, uses, so that that's really the shared parking. So maybe just taking another look at that.
Okay.
Again, as I said, really, you're really dotting i's and crossing t's so that, that the record's complete and, um, you know, well, I don't know, I'm sorry, I just took over and pointed to you. Sorry about that.
We'll go to the public after we finish, okay?
I think he's actually.
I'm with Time Bond.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know, I'm sorry.
Paul Fergal with Time Bond.
Hi, Paul.
Um, all the questions that, uh, BSC Group, uh, had asked were actually responded to in a December eighth letter, um, identifying.
Okay, yeah, I'm not, well, limited to us, yeah.
Do, okay, so can we, can, do you have a copy you can leave with us?
Uh, yes, yes.
Okay.
I can also email a copy too, if that's helpful.
Yeah.
I, I, I would say, uh, do both, under the present conditions.
What's the date of that place?
December.
December, okay. I do have.
So.
Are you open?
Well, what I, what I was just hoping to, he's, he's got.
Yeah, that, that was really the extent of the, the.
Where to go?
The traffic, um, the traffic. So, uh, we also prepared a site, uh, letter, the end of, dated November twenty-third, twenty sixteen, this time, from, from me. Um, I, I won't go through every single one. There's some, again, that are dotting i's and crossing t's. Um, some of the highlights, I guess, um, a couple of the waiver requests, um, specifically the, the, the general parking law landscaping and lighting. Certainly, we understand the concept of, the whole front of the site is existing, you know, they're not looking to tear this place up. But, you know, I, I don't even know, i- is the back compliant or how close is it to compliant? Can it be made compliant? Um, especially with the lighting in light of, uh, I know the, the police chief.
Correct.
Uh, had a memo specifically addressing the, the rear of that site and, and safety and, and what have you. So maybe just addressing those. Kind of a weird one, and, and not being an attorney, I was, it just popped out at me.
Did you get a copy of that letter from the police chief?
Yes, we, we did, thank you.
Yes, thanks.
Was, um, this was because they, there were a lot of old special permits in the application, and some of them are, you know, years of special permits. Some of them weren't great copies, so I couldn't necessarily read all of them. But the idea, and again, this is sort of dotting i's and crossing t's, but it seems like.
What number is one?
Four.
Okay.
Is, um, the zoning section one sixty-five dash ninety-four requires a finding by the Board of Appeals that when you're amending an existing non-conforming use, which this is, that they have the, shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. So I don't know if that's been done for this work. Um, I could, like, as I said, I couldn't find it. If, if it's there, I apologize. Um, pointing it out in the bevy of.
Not registered?
Uh, well, I, it was, as I said, I don't know how many special permits are in there.
I was, there's about eight or.
Yeah.
I, I, I think just to help with some of this, for example, um, on the, uh, lighting memo that has already been addressed. In the end, what the board's gonna be looking for is for these folks to say, we're satisfied here.
Yep, and that's what, as, as we get responses, that's, that's exactly what we do. Um, we, we put their responses in and then, and sort of close it out. You know, sort of a typical one, I didn't know, I, I, I did receive a memo from, or a letter from the Chief of Police. I didn't know if the Fire Department has had an opportunity to look at, at, um, this, if they have any concerns, if it's.
So real quick, Mr. Chairman, we've, uh, I've reached out to the fire safety officers. Um, we haven't connected yet. They got a new phone system, so there was a little bit of miscommunication, the phone tag, but there, we're, uh, we're gonna be getting together. We're gonna be preparing a, um, just a circulation plan showing a, a largest apparatus, you know, sort of driving around. We, we have the software that can show that.
So just to save yourself another meeting, pass the next one, to get that in front of the fire chief, get the fire chief's response to these guys and get their response, and if there's an issue, get that resolved before you come back and have that submitted.
That would be great, if we can do that.
Well, but this is, this is trying to just help you avoid.
Yeah, and on that line, I mean, from our perspective, it's more of, uh, just pointing it out for your benefit if, if the fire chief is happy. Obviously, their jurisdiction is their jurisdiction.
Correct.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna debate it with them.
Just so you know, the board, for, for the board's, uh, clarification, we've been involved with this property for many years now, and, um, the complaints that we hear almost once a year, guys, from police and fire, is to, is, uh, to fill those potholes which, which become gigantic after a season.
Gravel.
And we're trying to, we're trying to permanently solve that problem with the, with the proposal, so.
Yeah, and just, if I could, just very quickly, in terms of the matter of the finding, I, that's a very good point. I've had dialogue with the building inspector, and I won't speak for him, but it didn't appear that he felt that it was necessary in the circumstance because there has been parking over a period of years, but I'll let it, him speak for himself and have a communication directly to, to the board.
To address that. That would be great, um, cause I did read his letter and, and it's, it sounded like, yep, that'll take care of it.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question on number twenty-five?
Sure.
All of these seem, all the, one through twenty-four seem to me, and I, I'm a great expert, obviously, but seem to be things that we can work around and, and get answers to.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty-five, when you write, uh, such as our opinion that the porous pavement cannot be used to meet the groundwater recharge or treatment requirements of standards three and four, that, there doesn't seem to be a lot of leeway there.
And, and.
And twenty-five kinda goes back to, um, also, uh, six, where I mentioned the fact that obviously this is gonna require a filing, um, under the Wetlands Protection Act and the, and the local ordinance. Um, a, and that particular one, twenty-five, and a few of the others actually pertaining to the, the particular, the porous pavement, um, obviously get very much fleshed out in, in the Conservation Commission process. So I didn't know if, if an NLI's been submitted, uh, how far along that process may be.
Sure, so, um, Mr. Chairman, uh, just for the record, we did submit a notice of intent after having filed with you folks, uh, back in December. Our first hearing is a week from Thursday. And, uh, so we'll be, uh, at that first hearing, we're gonna ask, um, the Conservation Commission's permission to also rely on, um, hopefully the same peer review process that, um, that Dominic is doing for you folks, so that, uh, hopefully we can, we can kill two birds with one stone.
Only if he gives us the correct answers, though.
Well, and I, and I do think, so it's, it's, it's a very, it's kind of a unique situation back there in terms of, of what they're trying to do, what the right thing to do is, what the regs require, and, and I think there is a way, and I'm still mentally not, not being the design engineer of this, I'm still sort of fleshing it out in the back. I mean, I think there is a way to make it work u- under the requirements, just not the very direct way that, you know, the, the stormwater handbook has certain, here's what you have to do to prove compliance, and while that's the basics, there are times when you can be in compliance and not prove it through that method. And I think this might be one of those times, and I, I think what they've attempted to do is, is prove it through the very rigid, here are the numbers type method, and I think what we really have to do is sort of step back, take a look at it a little differently, a, and come up with, okay, here's why we meet what the intent and frankly, the, the, you know, the actual outcomes of the, the requirements are, but we just can't give you, you know, two plus two equals four.
So it's not a slam door now?
I don't think it's a slam door. I think it's just the, the way to go about proving it isn't the cut and dry out of the book way.
And you'll, it, to that, you will have to, um, educate the board to feel comfortable with if you're gonna be recommending something that is different.
Different. Yeah, and it's, it's not, it's not even that we're recommending something different. I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, I certainly think that, you know, with what's out there and what they plan on doing, I think.
As I recall, it's the detention pond that's back there.
Yeah, there's, there's something that's, uh, it's kinda circled in orange there in the back.
Yeah, that's the, that's the big issue.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Okay.
Like I said, I, I, I don't think, it, it does sound like a, a, a project killer. I know that, but it's, I.
Yeah, that's the chicklet.
I think it's one that you can make work. You just have to.
And I like, I like how you zeroed right in on that. Um, no, really, and.
It's, it's just the language. It had nothing to do with the.
Yeah.
It was a very definitive statement.
It was just a very definitive.
I, I had an, underlined. I think we all, I had a big asterisk.
Yeah, and that, and that covers a lot of the other ones in between six and twenty-five, sort of fall into, they're more kind of why you come to that statement. And a, again, it's more how you go about proving compliance. You just have.
I'm sorry, do you feel, uh, is there, are there any other particular items you wanna highlight, or does that?
I mean, a couple of the ones with regards to, um, you know, the O and M, some of the O and M plan requirements for the, the porous pavements, just sort of making them a little clearer and, um, you know, signage, I think is important, particularly back there, um, not just that it's porous pavement, but the, very much the no snow storage on that or in that channel.
I've had people ask me, um, if the entrance and exit is correct, that maybe it should be reversed, because it's such a, a difficult corner with, with four or five.
Oh, oh, not that if it's correct on the plan, meaning is it, should it be flipped?
No, but it's, it's the, it's that, it seems to be.
Library Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's in, it is, yeah, it's in a.
That's, have you looked into that?
No, I mean, we haven't really thought about, from an operational standpoint. I mean, I, I would think that's, um, I don't know if, if you wanna comment on that at all, you've probably looked at the.
Absolutely.
Site from a, from that perspective more than we have.
I think the current. I think the proposed configuration best suits the existing site in terms of the, um, eastern driveway is, is, is a one-way in, and that will follow towards around the back of the building and exit out towards the exit only side.
Right.
So I think that.
Well, they were saying that it should be the other way around. It should be, the exit should be the.
Exit being.
The exit being on.
The exit should be where you have the entrance.
Because of the cr, the street, the cross street, the street across, uh, East Main Street, Library Street comes in. I don't think you showed on that.
Well, no, it's.
No, it's kinda, it's just off the page.
Right.
Yeah, maybe.
Well, you got, you got east, you got, you got about sixteen to eighteen thousand cars in the morning.
I think you get into, if I, if I can throw in, if I remember right, I think the, the, the other question is where if you had to drive by the exit to get to the entrance, you're sort of creating people leaving, people slowing down to turn in. So these people are speeding up to get out, and these people are slowing down to get in, and you're, you'd be creating, you know, more, where you'd be creating more potential for accidents.
Would, would you?
I don't, I don't follow that, because a lot of people are coming from the west to the east.
Well, a lot of people are coming from the other way as well, but those people have to cross over traffic anyway, so they, they have to slow down to, whether you're, whether you're going out, whether you're taking a left out or a left in, as opposed to the right in, right out. If you're taking a right out of that site, you can just gun it. All right, I mean, that's basically what you're. All right, I mean, that's basically what you're gonna do, is to get out, so you're not holding up traffic.
So, would you, would you, um, would you please add to your list of just items to cross the Ts and dot the Is, that you, or you're comfortable with this circulation system, or, or not?
If, if I'm not just clarifying one thing, one of the benefits of having the entrance away from the, the intersection up here is that if there is a vehicle that's heading eastbound and wants to take a left into the site, but if you don't have the available stacking space, um, well, with this concept, you do have the available stacking space that will allow someone to cut in and take a left, if you're taking this left here, you're more likely to stack up and impede operations at the intersection.
That is, that is, that is true.
Yeah, there's no, I mean, I, I don't, be, just because of the location and the weird geometry of the roads, there's nothing that, you know, anyone has ever considered perfect. But I think, I agree, that I think the way it is, is the appropriate.
But I think we get more traffic coming from Haverhill from the west-east main than we get from, from Library Street.
In the, in the morning, certainly, I mean, it's to the Iowa.
You're, you're getting Haverhill traffic, you're getting Groveland traffic, it's much more the other way. I mean, we have bumper to bumper, right to Groveland.
So, so I think, so we don't have to resolve that tonight, but I think you hear the concern from the planning board, yeah, and I'll, again, I'll let my, my transmitter-
And make sure you'll take a quick look at it, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, and one, one other point was, and it was something that, and honestly, until I got here tonight, I didn't realize that Heidi was no longer here. Um, that's why, so I apologize, I left you a message today for Andrea or Heidi, so, 'cause I didn't know. Um, it was, one of the items she had talked and indicated that the board might be interested in, and that we've heard some other towns, and I'm trying to find the number right now, okay, number twenty, um, is the idea, I guess, you know, when we've heard of this, and, um, I, I'm not recommending it one way or the other, but she indicated you may be interested in asking the applicant to post some sort of bond to cover the maintenance costs for the first X number of years. I mean, from what I've seen is, in places, it's either been five or ten, um, just because it is porous asphalt and it's not your run-of-the-mill sweeping, it's a little more detailed, um, and-
How, how do you deal with that in your projects?
Uh, that we're designing?
They don't recommend a bond.
I, I, I was gonna say, I, I'd be sitting over here with my clients.
Just teasing.
And, no, and honestly, I mean, yeah, I mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't go in the door with it.
No, of course not, but how do you, how do you-
But if it was brought up.
How do you respond to the maintenance of porous pavement when the whole function is that it-
I mean, largely, the, the maintenance program they have in there, you know, like I said, there's a couple of cleanup things, uh, form and things like that, but largely, that's the, the maintenance that you, you do, it's, it's, apparently, instead of sweeping, it's vacuuming, you don't sand, because as weird as it sounds, s- the size of sand particles will get stuck in the porous part of the asphalt and clog it up over time. Um, you know, there will be points where you'll potentially need just through the natural progression of cars bringing sediments onto it, um, and, you know, just sediment transport, rain, et cetera, um, that you're gonna need to power wash it. That doesn't, I mean, if you, i- if you go up the UNH Stormwater Center, if you've ever been on there, if you've ever been up there, it's actually very cool if you have a chance to go up, um, but the information they have online, they have a ton of, I mean-
What's the name of it, please?
It's the UNH Stormwater Center, so actually, if you look, um, on number eighteen, um, there's sort of a link there, that's specifically to the maintenance section, but it's basically UNHEDU slash UNHSC.
We recently had a, had an issue with, uh, a failed course.
Correct. Yeah, and, and that, that's-
And we didn't really have any context like this, and this is very valuable.
Yeah, and it's, um, that is a great resource for all stormwater elements, it's a fantastic, uh, resource. And they have a lot of details, and print, a lot of onsite, you know, field testing of porous asphalt. And you'd be surprised, it really doesn't, it, it doesn't clog that much, even when you, even when you sand it, they still recommend not sanding it, but it's surprisingly resilient in terms of its ability to, to, to infiltrate water. Um, but there does potentially become a time when you, you have to power wash it.
Are there any studies out there, I don't wanna believe at this point right now?
Looks like this is, this is the place to find that.
That's the best, yeah, that's the best one, I mean, you'll find older, older sites, a lot of people reference, um, Walden Pond a number of years ago, the, it wasn't DCR at the time, I guess it was probably the, and, the, uh, MDC or whoever owned it at the time, it did a porous, and it failed miserably, but it was twenty years ago, anybody know, twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago? Yes, it was a very different section, it was a very different material, and they've come a long way with just the actual quality of the porous asphalt. Um, but there are still some towns, and, and it's fine and justifiable and understandable in a lot of ways, where they're concerned about that initial maintenance, and really, that initial maintenance happening. Because as you know, and I'm, I'm sure you guys do a wonderful job with your site, but some people don't.
Can, 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 can you, um, I'm, i- if there is any research out there that, um, is, uh, you know, after the fact of build projects and longevity and issues over the years, if there are any studies out there that UNH has done to actually see how these-
Yeah, and I, I can, I can direct-
That'd be great, that'd be great. Okay.
But as I was saying, so if, if the board did want to, to require some sort of a bond or, or similar, uh, meth, you know, certi to ensure that maintenance done, I, you know, I would just request that, that they put together a, a, a cost estimate, you know, an annual cost estimate with, you know, some reasonable approximation of escalation for however many years it may be for, for all of us to, to review and, and accept.
Probably will leave for the COMCOM as well.
Well, that's, I mean, that's the way to do it, too, is-
Yeah, I mean, they, they may do it.
Forceable conditions, within order of conditions.
Right, I mean, that's-
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, that, and that's always the case, is, you know, they, they can have a, a pretty good O and M and, and long-term pollution, long-term pollution prevention plan.
Thank you, Dominic, did a good job.
Wait, did you have anything else, you all set, Dominic?
Yeah.
Okay, um, just, uh, going to the public, if there was anyone out there that, okay, uh, bringing it back to the board? Anyone on the board have anything right now, I had a couple of things I just wanted to mention, but-
The, the only question I had was having to do with porous pavement, is there a recommended, um, schedule for, uh, maintenance? I see there's a checklist, but a checklist that was last checked twelve years ago.
Yeah, and the che- I mean, the checklist I'm referencing actually does have, it's, if you go to it, it has items, it has-
Fifty thousand miles.
And check, yeah, and, and they, in their own M-plan, they actually have frequency for, uh, the one thing they didn't necessarily have was frequency for power washing, uh, it's one of the items I referenced, or, or, 'cause power washing is a little amorphous, more of a defined, somebody's gonna do, you know, annual inspections on this, at what point do they know it has to be power washed, type, type situation? But they have, uh, you have, uh, vacuuming schedules in there and things of that nature, and I forget what it is, but it's all, it's, did you have any?
My question is, there's more, just a usefulness of these spaces back there, there's many parks here. They're gonna walk all the way around to the front to go Dunkin' Donuts, or Domino's, or what's the, who's the intended person that's parking back here? And where do they have to go in?
I, I know I addressed this, you addressed this a little bit last time, but I don't remember.
That's okay, sure.
So, at the last, back in our trouble when we did our initial presentation, we talked about how, um, the, the owner's wishes are to, uh, impress upon the tenants to ask their employees to primarily park, um, in the rear, uh, of the, of the building in order to take advantage of freeing up maybe some extra spaces for, uh, for patterns.
Customers, yeah.
Right, so, uh, in those cases, uh, and to answer your question specifically, there are several doors, you know, various locations in the back, um, here, for example, uh, there's another door, uh, located here, and then at the back of the Dunkin' Donuts, for example. So you don't have to necessarily walk around the entire, um, building, uh, I, I think there's another door back here as well, um, to, uh, to get to the front of the building, and it'd be unlikely, most customers probably won't park in the back of the building.
If you can avoid it, I wouldn't.
Right, yeah, so that's why the owner, uh, although it's hard to enforce, you know, we wanna keep it open to the public, um, in case there's some, I don't know, big event or something like that, but, um, but just ask the, um, the employees to, to try to park in the rear.
I guess what just concerns me about it, though, is that without any sidewalks or anything, you have people basically walking through the flow of traffic, essentially, right?
That's right.
Okay.
I thought we talked about that before, and, and you had pointed out that they were gonna walk through the building, that only the employees were gonna use the back, so there wouldn't be any need to be walking around.
Well, I'm, I'm, what I'm saying is that people can walk around, um, we're providing sidewalks in a couple of areas where we can on the back, uh, and, and those employees can certainly enter the building from the back, but in order to get from the front, from the back to the front, one would have to walk along one of the driveways, um, if they, if they wanted to.
I wouldn't recommend that at all, I would not, I would think-
Can you please address that?
That's true.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, we don't anticipate a whole lot of traffic running through, but I understand safety concerns.
But you're not looking for that, you're not looking for a pedestrian walking when you're driving.
That can, that, that one corner there that Matt was talking about, if, if there was someone walking there and cars coming that way and people aren't looking, I could see something happening.
They're drinking their coffee while they're driving, texting.
Are they, you know, into, uh, maintained space and everything, or is it more of like a industrial hallway? Or is it, uh, like, you know, very much, uh, something that people would know that they can walk through there, or is it, it?
So for employees, it's, it's, it's more obvious because they're familiar with the site, but there are no, I don't think official customer entrances in the back. Uh, Jim, is that, is that right?
No, um, I was just about to jump in, I'm, I'm Jim Clifford, I work with, uh, the applicant. There is gonna be a hallway running from the back of the site through to the front of the building. It, it, its intent is primarily for deliveries and for the employees and the workers that are working, and the tenants that can be accessed from that hallway, but it will be clearly marked and, and, and you will have the ability to walk through to get to the front of the site safely without going around the building.
Would, would it be possible to highlight that as, as a passageway for the public?
I, I'm sure we could, I'm sure that's something we could look at.
So that if I'm someone driving and I park back there and I see I've gotta walk through driveway one side or driveway another side, but I see there's this really clear door that says, I get inside the building to get to the front, I'm gonna probably go there, 'cause it's nice to get inside and get out of the elements right away.
So, in, I, I'm, I have the privilege of, you know, being a grown adult male, and so I don't have to worry about some of these things, but, you know, if these hallways are not maintained or they're not supervised, I mean, there are safety concerns there, too.
There are.
It's pretty open, though, isn't it, it's really a wide, isn't it a wide area, maybe, is it thirty feet wide? And there's access for more stores or whatever inside?
Uh, I mean, the, the space in there right now is wide open, so it's hard to answer your question, but the, the hallway will be maintained, it's, it's not just gonna be an empty, dark hallway, there are a couple of tenants that you'll be able to access right from in there.
Okay.
The Driving Academy right now, you walk through and their, their glass door with the person sitting will be right in there.
Right there, okay, all right.
There'd be a door in the Domino's.
You could almost, you could almost make it like a main street.
Right, right, it, it, to answer your question, it, it won't be a, sort of a dimly lit-
Back, back warehouse space or anything like that, okay, all right, all right, I'm, I'm satisfied.
That's a good point.
Yes, great.
Get it lit, lit up.
Um- Tilly, do you have anything?
I think you covered everything that I was concerned with.
So you, you have the letters from the water department, and, um, you have, uh, Peter Durkey's letter about snow, where you're gonna put it. Did you not get that?
Is it the highway?
This is highway.
I believe so, yeah. I believe so, we have that as well, thank you.
Yeah. Um, and, where's the other, uh, and already was mentioned, Chief of Police's comments with, and he was talking about the lighting. And I, I would, um, caution you on the lighting, um, when you do that. What you have out front now is fairly decent, you know, residential, it has a softer feeling to it than the LED lights that are being used today.
After our last hearing, Mr. Chairman, we had a long discussion out in the parking lot about LEDs, and I think we were decided to maybe move away from them.
I love it.
So we're gonna try to match more of the type of lighting that's, that was in the front, we were talking about that after the last meeting.
The whole statement.
What?
So, this is the first time I've heard anybody excited.
The LEDs are, um, the, the AMA has now come out with a report, have you seen that?
I haven't.
In terms of the health hazards, um, it's an industry that hasn't caught up to itself.
Wait, what are the health hazards, I'm concerned, I got them all over my house.
They, well, I, I'll tell, I'll, I'll, I'll give you the link to the, to the thing, but anyways, so, um, and if you do go with LEDs, then you need to just be judicious in how you spec it, and you need to introduce, uh, the ability to dim them if you do go with that, and that's an additional cost, obviously, to the installation, but it's just an FYI, and it's a important thing.
Just in, in terms of that, before you get off that topic, in terms of lighting, uh, you're not looking for a photometric plan, you're just looking for cut sheets and specs for-
Well, we were gonna, we were gonna do a phot- a photometric analysis, that was one of the comments from last time.
You, you would, yeah, yeah, you'd need to know.
Just to be able to prove out the, um, the bylaw.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're actually, we've already started on, on it, so.
You had comments about that subject in that brick outside. I haven't had any positive remarks about that design or that white brick that you have covering there, it's kinda chintzy. What do you have plans to, to do some more landscaping or?
The site still needs to be, um, fully stabilized, I think that has a lot to do with its look right now, there's not a lot of green.
What are you talking about?
The white brick that they have, uh, as, um-
In the septic wall.
Like, it looks like a wall.
Oh, the concrete?
Right.
The, the, yeah, the artificial stone?
It's not the best, not for our town, anyway.
Right, for a reinforced concrete wall with a liner, believe it or not, we got a lot of compliments, I was kind of surprised that it came out as good as it did, um-
The wall, the, the wall itself is, is not bad, um, the, um, the, the problem is up top, and what you have in place, you're gonna be battling till the, you need to change the section that's up top if you're gonna get anything to grow in there, and then you need to pay attention to the seed that you're putting in there, and then the first three years is a hardcore commitment, um, otherwise, you just wait, you're just gonna be spinning your wheels forever doing that. The other is, um, I wish the system had been pulled back versus maximizing it the way you did up to the front property line, but you, there is some space there, um, I don't know what you're gonna do with that space.
So, we, we, we had proposed to, uh, to do, to landscape that space in front of the wall along Main Street. That was, um, that was something that we had shown on one of our plans.
I think it wouldn't have been so noticeable if it wasn't white, you know, like across, I'm, I wasn't in favor of nappes, but now I'm used to it. And it's brown, you know, it's more earthy and it's, you know-
That's an interesting comment, the color is, is part of the problem with that, and there are applications you can do to, to modify colors. The other was the fence that you have up in the property line there right now, I noticed that it's starting to move a little. So you might want to check it out with the butter.
Okay.
Um, so, anyways, so that was it for me.
Okay.
Yeah, pick a note down at the date?
Yeah.
Could I just mention, just, just keep it on the radar, um, we'll have to discuss this a little further, the building inspector. And the decisions that were issued by the Board of Appeals back in two thousand, actually ninety-seven, there was a requirement that the entrances, both the entrances be a minimum of fifty feet in width, and so-
Paved?
No, width, oh, yeah, actually, with paved, width. So, um, you know, if we have to go back to the ZBA for cleanup, it would be helpful to get some comment on the fact that, you know, a thirty-foot cut or thirty-one foot cut is more appropriate, uh, so that we have some support from a professional that indicates that would be-
Absolutely.
And, and the second item was, there was a, uh, requirement for a raised granite divider on the exit and, um, of, of that site, and it's not there today, but it just causes damage to, to cars, it's a maintenance nightmare.
I can imagine, yeah.
And so, you know, even if we threw a rumble strip or something, uh, as simple as that, to make it easier for maintenance. I mean, those are items, those are two items that are just dangly out there from twenty years ago.
What, and would, would wanna work with you on the common sense of that, what, what do you need on something like that?
Well, just, you know, that-
Memo from the board saying you're in support of?
Yeah, yeah, it could have been through this process that, you know, you don't think that, or for, for safety or other concerns, it's probably better to-
So this I, I would, I would like to put to our technical review agent to, you know, on their letterhead.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, you can just maybe point out which decision it was in, so I don't have to go.
So the, the entry and exit is currently thirty feet each?
They're not, but they were, they were, it was under a decision, we're not sure if it was a typo or, or what it was, 'cause that's, that's pretty wide.
That's, that's, yeah, that's really wide, so.
Could be typo.
Okay.
Excuse me, our December eighth, uh, letter also addresses those comments as well, why they should be-
Those two, just then, those comments, the width of the, yeah, yeah.
Correct, addresses the, the SC comments as well as the Chinese, those, those two comments there.
Okay.
Yeah, the point.
Okay, um, so, um, when do you think- So, um, when do you think you would be able to, 'cause rescheduling is kind of what works for you guys? You know, you're gonna need, you back into it and we need to get our material, um, the Wednesday before our meeting. Our meet, we, uh, you know, the week before.
Right, one week before the meeting, of course. So the first realistic date, you know, I, I think would be the eighth. That's, do you have a regular meeting scheduled for that date?
Second and, second, we have a meeting on the eighth? And the twenty-second.
Really?
Of February.
The eighth is the second?
Second, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yep. Well, the first is the first, February first.
Oh, okay, there it is.
The Wednesday and then, yeah, it's the next one.
Works for us.
Does that, yeah. So we could go, shoot, reschedule, uh, continue the, yeah.
Is that realistically enough time? That's three weeks to do things.
Right, so we've been, uh, we've been at, working on these for, uh, for a little while. We didn't wanna submit anything until.
When you said October, my heart sank. I'm, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's, uh, that's okay.
It's been a challenge.
Right. I understand.
No one's fault.
So, um, if that works for you, that works for us.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing on the Georgetown Plaza to February eighth at seven fifteen.
Second.
Motion has been made and it has been seconded to continue the, uh, public hearing for Georgetown Plaza to February eighth, two thousand and seventeen. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dominic.
Pizza place, Johnny.
Ronaldo.
Now I will remember. Alright, you're doing pretty good.
Said to Tilly before we got started, we'll be here till ten, ten-thirty. Not if I can control it.
Keep moving forward, moving forward.
She's just gonna read us this, this, she submitted, it's ridiculous. We can read.
Yeah. Okay, so we're gonna, uh, with the board is ready, we're gonna move on to, um, new business where we have, uh, Mr. Olson's project.
Thank you, Andrew.
Good evening, Alan.
Good evening, Tilly, thank you. And gentlemen, thank you for, uh, seeing us, but thank you for volunteering for this job.
Uh-oh, he's giving us compliments.
No, I say, no, listen, I've been around long enough to say, you deserve thank yous for volunteering for this job.
Appreciate it.
I'm teasing you, Alan.
I mean that. Well, li- listen, I, um, I thought, um, maybe a little bit of, um, a little bit of history. I don't know, every time I go to the coffee shop, every time I bump into somebody at church or anything like that, at least one out of every five people say, so what's happening now with it? I'm not having, even if it's happening.
Us too, we've heard it now.
I was gonna, that was my next statement, and I bet you've been asked the same thing. So, by the way, Sean is my, my associate who works for me.
Hi.
An attorney, but she works at my office. She's been tasked with trying to shepherd this project somewhat. So, we thought, we, so we're, we're circling back. I got lots of recommendations, a little history. Everybody's full of recommendations, you know, I mean, some of them, some of them you have to, you've heard them all. Some of them you have to go, oh my God, that recommendation. But, uh, some of them were typical ones. We were going to town meeting at one point and the select, and it was on the warrant, and the selectman said, Alan, can you, maybe you don't, can you take it off? You know, right at the door, and let's put it on, let's see if we can go with a, um, a forty-B, friendly forty-B. There's been a whole, this series of recommendations of how we got to this point. So we thought we would, um, besides that, besides recommendations of going around to everybody, we wanted to kinda get around to every board and see, you know, just tell them what we have, what we've got. I don't think, other than, to tell, I, other than, I'm not telling you, but I don't think we have a reason, uh, uh, like an official reason to be here like to your board, but we wanted you to be aware of it instead of having to discuss it in the coffee shop. And that's kinda what brought us to that point.
Appreciate it.
So, um, and, you know, at some point you're gonna, maybe you have to comment, and if you have to comment, we could answer any questions now.
Right, I mean, our hope is that you can be on board for when we do have to go before the zoning board, that you guys would be recommending it and not bring up any of your, any concerns you may or may not have at that point. We'd like to address them prior to.
Did they, did you submit the application yet?
And that's the whole point.
Not yet. We want, we wanna meet.
We had done that before, though.
Yes.
We had submitted it before.
A long time, a, a while ago, and now we've made some changes and we've, we're trying to meet with everyone, all the boards before to get, to make sure everyone's.
And that's the, uh, that's the whole, um, that's basically in the nutshell, the definition of a friendly forty-B. So even though you're technically not required to come here, if you're gonna go under the banner of friendly, good move.
Alright, that's, um, I, I think that you've got every, I, I don't, I don't, I'm gonna pack this here. But essentially, the, um, the, the history of it, I purchased the property, it was falling down, we all know what it was. We soon forget what it looked like. You couldn't see the building. I will tell you from working on it, that probably within three years it would've collapsed. The chimneys were actually rotten inside. So, I, I bought it, it was for sale. Up in the market, I bought it, and I said, you know, I like those type of historic properties. I, that's something I enjoy. So, and I said, no, maybe I can make a dollar on it at the same time. We spent a lot of money just, just upgrading it, uh, an awful lot, a lot more than we ever expected, um, with sills and everything else. And, um, the one thing that we thought in order to, for the property to be maintained, as what it is, is truly a historic piece in the center of Georgetown.
It's a nice looking building.
Is that it took, it would take and require, it's gonna require maintenance and, and any one of us, you know, at our own budgets, if you're trying to maintain a house like that, it's really difficult. So the idea, the concept of this, that they're just trying to put some apartments in, was to put condos in. I think we submitted for, um, for ten one-bedroom condos originally, um, in that fit. And what we were doing is, um, that, that puts, has a condo budget that, that can now maintain a property and maintain them so it can look nice instead of falling apart. We, um, the plan was to take and remove, remove the actual back, and unfortunately, and this isn't a problem of the historic, but unfortunately, that very little piece in the back is probably one of the older pieces, it's a little teeny thing. But we're gonna remove the, we're gonna remove the L between the barn and the, and the house and, um.
I gave you guys all the plans that you can see.
Yes, you did.
Well, there's the plans here.
And basically, is, and basically put in the same addition, in the same footprint, we're not changing footprints or anything. The three stories there, and that would be, um, bathroom and kitchens, bathroom and kitchen. Everybody likes old, but nobody wants old bathrooms. You know, and the ladies don't always want old kitchens.
That's an important room.
Right. So, so that, so that, that was the idea of that, and then also to put two units in the, um, in the barn, or four units originally, that's what it was, I think.
Right, so now.
So we took in, uh, we had the ten is what we had scheduled, 'cause the, it, the system is, it's, it's an upgrade of the existing. The Board of Health long, long ago has determined that it's a ten-bedroom unit, and that's, so it's always about bedrooms in that building.
But they only said eight.
No, it was ten. Eight units, ten, ten bedrooms.
We're doing eight units.
Okay.
Ten bedrooms, though.
Ten bedrooms.
They, they, they count in bedrooms.
Okay.
It, it, it could've been two apartments with five bedrooms.
Alright.
Okay.
I gotcha.
So, um, so it's basically an upgrade. It doesn't require anything for that, it's an upgrade of a system, just like if you, you, you buy a house and you have to upgrade the system. And, and that system is long ago, long ago was approved. It was designed, submitted and approved. It's just, if there's any upgrades, fine. So the idea is to, at this point, we're gonna drop it to eight. And we went to the, we went to a ZVA hearing officially, and there was comments that were, there was comments that were made, you know, not like you'll do this, you know, you can't say you'll do this, but this comment that was made, you say like, you know what I mean, it's kinda like, this might be nicer. We had two people that were there complain, comment. One was across the street, and their issue was that Alan never come over and told me what he was gonna do. And I said, well, I apologize for that, 'cause I was out there all the time, and I didn't. Didn't walk around my whole neighborhood. And the neighbor right next door, who lives in a twelve-unit condo, didn't want me to be parking on our land on that site. With all of the units. There's parking there for, I think the zoning requires two, two units, two parking spaces per unit. We had, we had twenty parking spaces, so at this point with eight, we only need sixteen, but there's room for ten.
How are you gonna accommodate that neighbor? I remember seeing that they were very concerned about that.
Tilly, whether it's a single-family house or, or if there's ten units or five units. We own that land and, and, and it's parking. I say accommodate, and I'm not trying to say.
You don't have any other place to put it, that's.
Well, it's, it's our land and we wanna park cars there. Just, she parks her car right on the, it's the old story, not in my backyard.
That's what I remember. There, I think there were two women there that lived there.
Yeah, they, they lived together.
Yeah, they were upset.
So they, they, um, that was the, that was the comment. And I just said, unfortunately.
Can't do anything about it.
What's gonna go in there? I'm gonna be using that, that land, just because it was never used, and it was overgrown and everything else. Not gonna change anything.
Right, okay.
So I don't know the, and, and nor do I know there's a way to accommodate, but we did accommodate by one thing, Tilly. Um, it, with that and the recommendations is we were going for ten apartments, and we reduced it to eight. So we have accommodated that by reducing the number of apartments, which reduces the number of parking spaces required.
And we accommodated affordable housing and making it one of the.
Oh, yeah, well, the, the affordable housing, um, we, we, affordable housing, we increased the number of bedrooms, I almost said bedrooms.
They wanted, we originally had two one-bedroom units, and affordable housing asked for a two-bedroom unit. So now there's gonna be, the affordables will be one one-bedroom and one two-bedroom.
If, 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 if I'm, uh, made, uh, jump in, um, what I would like to try to avoid is for the planning board tonight, and I'm only speaking for myself, 'cause we haven't talked about this yet, obviously, until tonight, is for us to be trying to identify site-related issues and trying to solve them tonight. And what, what I would like to suggest to you and to the board is that we take these plans and we get our technical review engineer, who is the one trained to review this stuff. This is what I'd like, this is what I'm suggesting. Otherwise, um, you're leaving it up to the board, um, and you're not taking advantage of the town's process of how they would normally do a project like this, i.e. the friendly forty-B.
I don't think, well, the, um, we're not trying to, I'm not trying to resolve issues here, I'm trying to give you a history of the issues.
I understand, but we, we just started then to get into an issue, so I was just trying to back up and give a broader picture of, of how one planning board member, I've thought a lot about this. This is the first time, um, that, uh, a friendly forty-B has come forward. And so there's a little bit of a new process here.
It isn't exactly very friendly. They have to bring in engineers and just bring it to a stop again.
No, the, the point is, no, no, no.
We're dealing with existing situations. We're not dealing with new.
The point, the point is, um, the point is, uh, it's not about stopping the project.
You know that's what happens with it.
It's about working, it's a, it, it would, it would cause someone to create a review and, and highlight issues from a professional's point of view who knows how to review the plans like that, and it would deal with the issue of, uh, the highest and best use, making this the best project it can be so that it works for you folks and it works for the town and the abutters. That's the whole intent of, um, you, I'm sure you saw the attorney's letter. I asked her to specifically write that, which I think is really helpful for everybody. And so that's the spirit of it, Alan, and, and I know no one wants to do that. I get that.
Well, I don't know, I, I mean, I don't, I'm just telling you.
Yeah, yeah.
Listen, no one wants to sit here, 'cause you're sitting in the power situation and argue with you, but I'm, but that's not my personality, you know that by now. And, and you're, you're, you're in a situation here, we're coming here to talk about this project, and it's really a zoning board thing, and yet now you're trying to move us into this, this site, you know, to this sort of a situation here with.
No, I'm not.
With, with, with paying for an attorney to look at things that, that, you know, the septics, they're, they're all, they're all existing. We're not changing the building footprint. We're not changing anything.
You're changing the use, you're changing.
But that's the only way.
Oh, no, it's a residential.
But that's huge. You're changing the number of people. That's huge.
Two cars to twenty.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the site, the site plan is a whole new animal. That's a big change from the planning board's perspective. That's our purview.
You probably will need that from the zoning board to evaluate.
You're probably, you're probably killing this project with this here, and I'll tell you why, and I've heard that before.
It's not us killing.
But I'm gonna explain why.
Go ahead.
The, the, well, we talked with the housing task force, we talked about, um, putting in, putting in, um, the two lower income, and it was a fairly big group in selectmen involvement or two. They said, well, I said, listen, the amount of things that you're asking us to give you, that does, it doesn't make any economic sense. They said, well, you know, if it's not gonna make economic sense, come back and, and, come back and talk to us and maybe we'll, we'll reduce the number, something like that. We hadn't gone back with them, but it doesn't make any economic sense the way it is right now. I mean, every time you add another five, ten thousand dollars to something like that, it's, it's crazy.
I know, but let me, let me, let me try this approach to talking about it. For example, on your, um.
Remember, your request also includes all kinds of engineering on this side. Additional engineering, additional changes.
So let me, let me, um, so I'm looking at this plan by Land Services.
Yep.
And who, whose Land Services, are they civil engineers? Are they architects? Are they?
It's a, oh, geez.
Who are they?
Rob, um, who owns the garage down, who owns the garage crossing?
Sheet one of three.
I, I just have a memory loss. Who owns the garage crossing the Richdale?
Um, Mark, Mark Belanger, the B and B.
No, no, across from the Richdale.
Across from Richdale.
Oh, I know who you're talking about.
I know, just have another.
That's okay, but.
Well, anyways, it's, it's his son. He's an, he's an engineer. It's just, it's just, um.
He's a civil engineer?
They're stamped.
Yeah, I've terminated them since then.
You might not have all the stamped copies, because I, we had submitted the stamped copies previously to the, um, ZVA, so I got copies of those.
Okay. The reason I just asked that is because when I look at this plan, now I'm looking at the one that's not stamped, so I, I don't know if this is the updated version or not.
It is. All the ones you have are the updated, they're just not stamped.
Okay, so.
Which one are you looking at, just so I'm looking at the right one?
Sheet one of three.
Okay.
Septic construction plan.
Yes.
Now, the septic construction plan happens to also be the site grading plan. So, the drawing is mislabeled. When I look at the grading, over the septic reserve area, basically what the grading is telling me is that he has created a high point on the site, and he's pitching all of the water directly off the property onto the abutters property, which is map eleven A lot one-one-nine-one. That, on this plan here, so I'll hold it up here. So here's the septic. And what he's done with the way he's done his grading is he's created an artificial high point here, and there's a ridge line here, and all of this water and this pavement is going directly off property here. You can't do that. And that's just me taking a half an hour look in preparation for tonight's meeting on this particular item. If, if, if I don't have, I don't have.
It was.
I don't have the time to do what the technical review agent does. I mean, this is the work I do. I don't have that time and I'm not gonna put my time in to do it. That's what our technical review agent is for. It's not about holding it up. It's about working with the intent of the friendly forty-B and this idea of a memo of understanding, memo of agreement. And if you want that memo of agreement, and you want the planning board to show up later and support the project, these are items that just need to be addressed to protect the health, safety, welfare of the public. We're not doing it to stop the project. We're doing it 'cause it's our job. And it's what would happen if this was a normal project.
Okay, let me ask, let me put this to you differently.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, forget the apartments, just right there, just that unit. Tomorrow morning, I can, I can go to the Board of Health and have them down there and I can put that septic system in. Right, for a house. Just as it is. Doesn't require any board, doesn't require any approval, doesn't have any authority under anybody.
Yeah.
But it doesn't change anything. I mean, tomorrow, this, this can be done just like this.
Well, it's not. You're not, you're not, you're not.
But it can be done just like this tomorrow?
You're not re, no, no, you can't. You can't come in there and grade the surface and pave it up to where you have parking going right up to the property line, and it's all pitching water up. You can't do that.
I, if I'm not, if I remember rightly, I think the street is only seven, and you're putting something that's nine. Elevation, I mean, that's, you're gonna get flooded yourself. So, yeah, you can put a septic, but it's gonna cause damage later.
Alan, I can't, I can't stress this enough, and I can't be more sincere enough. This is not about trying to throw a monkey wrench in. It's not trying to create additional work. It's not trying to stop the project. I, I think to have this, uh, project go for the use that it is, is great. To get affordable housing and this idea of downtown is great. But there are some basic, basic health, safety, welfare issues that need to be addressed. And that's the way that we would do it in a typical project. And that's the way that we would do it in a typical process. It's not about asking for the world, I mean, but, so.
I hear what you're saying. You don't hear what I'm saying, but I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
No, I I think I do, you can, you can do that, no, I.
I I'm not looking for sympathy, I'm just looking for practicality.
It's expensive, and and I realize.
Well, it isn't expensive, this isn't, this isn't like, uh, there's, there's lots of money running around. Besides, I mean, not only just lot, no, lots of money, this is even restricted if there was money in it, by by virtue of low income.
Yeah.
I mean, it is, so there isn't, it isn't a, this high-flying thing that everybody's gonna build off into the sunset and retire with.
I think the only other suggestion to the chairman I would have is that we could just state that has to be reviewed by the zoning board. Because that would be an issue that, you know, we could list the things that need to be looked at by a consultant. And rather than us being, cause really, the planning board is only an advisor.
You are, you are correct, and that's a very interesting idea.
Yeah.
That's an interesting idea.
Yeah, cause they're, they're the, the people in charge.
It is their, it is their jurisdiction, no question about it. I I was, um, we did a project when I was sitting in your side of the table, uh, down in Falmouth, Mass., and it was a friendly forty B. Um, and what the planning board had us do, and the applicant decided he wanted to do that, um, he, uh, had their technical review agent review our plans, um, and we worked with them directly, but it was not enforceable, but that opinion then that came from the planning board was based on their technical review agent, but the work had already been done and they gave that to the ZBA.
Mm, that's another way.
And that, you know, so.
Sure.
Chicken or the egg, um, but I I would be willing to consider that as well, it's, again, it's.
What is that, I'm just, so I can grasp it, I didn't grasp it.
That we would, we would list the things that the zoning board would have to review and get a consultant to review it, rather than us doing that process and making the letter, based on whatever the consultant recommends. We would just say that needs attention to the zoning board, you know, and then they're the ones.
On the zoning board to figure out what, how they're gonna address.
With the, with the.
See, the zoning board doesn't have a technical review agent, but.
Right, they don't have that expertise, which is one of the flaws in the forty B. It's the zoning board is the only people that can vote for it.
And the, and the other way you can do this too, is you don't have to apply as a friendly forty B. You know, you don't have to go that route.
Well, we we did, and that's what brought me to, that's what, the route I started to take, go back to the history one second. Um, is when we went, when we traveled through this thing, actually, it was, it was, I caught it before the bill inspector, it was a small thing, it was the ten thou that, if you look, there's a, the ten thousand square foot per, um, for a, for a, uh, housing unit.
Yep.
Right? Which means nothing, you can't do anything downtown, because I don't know what this is, it's a quarter acre, maybe or something, or less than that.
Yeah.
So, that ten thousand, it just complies with everything under the sun, it's pot, multi-units are allowed there, everything is allowed there. I, there's nothing, I don't think, there's not a lot of.
We need a comprehensive permit, that's why we're going.
So that, so the ten thousand, so I went to the, I I had it, put it on the town meeting, I said, you know what, I'm just gonna have it changed somehow or another, cause I, first off, well, what else, Tilly, I mean, we gotta, you gotta take one route or the other, right?
Yeah, but that was almost impossible to get at a town meeting, that's not that, uh, that's not a.
You say that, Tilly, but that's, you know how, the, anyways, neither here nor there, it was on the town, it was on the town meeting warrant.
Didn't think it out.
In the, um, in the selectmen asked at that point, they said, Jesus, let's not put it on the town meeting. Um, just an aside, I think that town, that ten thousand is outrageously small thing, you'll never do anything.
It's not unusual, because as I, as I, you know, did some research, all, all this whole area has.
We talked about this, about that ten thousand.
All this whole area has pretty much the same bylaw.
So that, so anyways, that's, that's where it was going originally, and it came back to, I don't know, I got lost.
But that's why we have to do the friendly forty B.
And that's why it came back to the friendly forty B, see?
Sixteen thousand square feet.
Yeah, could you say, no, we don't have to do a friendly forty B?
Can't you, you don't have to do a friendly.
Really? No.
The lift is more for supportive.
First off, we don't wanna do that, second off.
No, you're over the, you're over the, you're over the threshold, so you can't do it.
Correct, doesn't apply.
So it was an issue, that's what brought us to that point.
So this is the only way we can do it.
It was that ten thousand thing, so we can't, we can't go the ZBA, you can't, whether it's a hardship or not, um, for that ten thousand. That brings, brings us back to to the forty B, the friendly forty B.
Yeah, so I.
So that the ZBA can say yes, yes, they or nay, and, and.
Yeah.
You know, and and waive that.
So, when are you gonna do a plot, do you have any time for it?
Uh, let me, let me ask, could we?
We had, we wanted, this was our last stop, we've already talked, the state's been involved, everybody's been.
But you don't have an application yet, you don't have, you're not ready. This is not an application, I mean.
Wait, that, well, we've had, the application's all been done, we were here, we were there before.
I have the application, it's all done.
Oh, okay.
But I didn't, I wasn't gonna put it on until, you were the last board we had to go to, to get on board with us.
You save the best for last.
Well, we wanted to meet with you guys before I put it on.
I'm curious, uh, so what I think you've heard from Tilly and me are two different approaches to the same ends, possibly, wha- what are you guys thinking?
I, I, look. This board, we review these things all the time, and we learn from past issue, from past projects, what the issues are that we need to flag. Um, the zoning board has their own expertise and, but I'm not sure that they're gonna have that level of expertise on, on these issues that.
They don't.
That this board does.
No dispersions on them, but that's not.
It's just not their, not, not what they do.
Correct.
I would be uncomfortable if we're being asked to sign off on something to do that without a technical review agent doing, signing off.
Bob?
What he said, and I really do, I'm, you're not interested in sympathy, but I, I, I I am nonetheless sympathetic to your position, um, I would love to see this built in the town.
I would too.
I would absolutely love it. But there are risks involved that we know how to mitigate, that's what the board does. And, um, but there's a cost that comes with that mitigation, um.
I don't know, maybe, Bob, what, well, he says, what are those risks?
What are the risks that you guys already see, but yeah, okay.
Let him finish this, let him finish. There's risk of not doing things, public health and safety and stuff.
That's, those are the risks I'm talking about, these are, these are fundamental, basic risks, this is, there's nothing arcane about this.
We're not talking about, we're not talking about aesthetics.
No, no, I know, that's why I'm trying to understand, yeah, first, okay.
I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear Bob finish.
It's. If you can. I think that it is the board's responsibility to identify our areas of concern. And, you know, stipulate approval on the basis of those concerns being addressed. How that's done? I don't know.
You're thinking more on Tilly's line.
I'm thinking more on Tilly's line. Then, then, cause we, we're not really in a position, I don't think, to, to require.
We can't, we can't demand, we can't require, um, it's, we can ask and that's all.
Asking for our sign off and, I'm.
We're not asking for your sign off, we're here to say, you know, in one way, we're asking you, you know, do you see, well, you know, we have a, or to go up, we're trying to mitigate you going up with forty-nine questions.
Later.
You know.
Well, that, that, so you are asking for our sign off.
Me too.
And that's fine.
So either we have these questions now or we have these questions later, you're telling us you'd like us to have these questions now, so that, that's, that's what we're doing.
Right, that's why I was kinda asking, since you said you, you do have expertise in this, I was, that's why I was wondering, specifically, what are your concerns that you're, I mean, you've already thought about this, so I was just wondering.
He said that's what he does for job, but he's not willing to do that, time-wise, I don't know.
What, whatever. You know, just, just briefly, when I looked at it, the, the, the items that I would be looking for would be a layout plan, there is no layout information. Um, the grading and drainage plan, which is the septic construction plan, but have that, um, done in such a way that, for example, that I, that example I pointed out, and I haven't looked at it any further than that, but when I see a conceptual fundamental flaw in a drainage plan at that level, a big flag goes up for me. Um, lighting, I don't know what is the plan for lighting and how you're gonna shield the neighbors and the butters and keep light on your property. I don't know the curb cut issue. Um, I don't know what happens with the parking spaces that are out there and and if we can, if you can just jettison a parking space, I don't know those ones, but those are the technical questions.
But do you hear what you're, you hear yourself, you got, you're turning this into a whole planning board subdivision type of thing, and this isn't what this is about, I don't believe. I mean, we're looking, you know, the reality of your, I mean, I, what you, you bring up valid points, but, but we're, we're creating this whole subdivision type of, not subdivision, but the whole.
Site, site plan.
Planning board process, I mean, we're not, it's not a, we're here and we're not here, we're not here, supposed to be here for the planning board. There's a big, big difference.
It, it, it's, it's a new, it's, it's a new site plan.
And which?
It's a, it's a new.
In which case, if I might, why don't I just skip the zoning board of appeals and just come to the planning board?
Because the state is, the state requires the zoning board to make that decision, not us.
That's what you're asking me to do.
It's this, this.
For a forty B.
For a forty B.
That's what we're up against.
I'm not a forty B, general, I'd like to come here as a subdivision, I wanna put ten units in that thing, am I, am I wrong, I don't know.
You're probably under ten thousand square feet per, per unit, correct?
Well, here.
What?
Then you're back to your ten thousand square feet per unit.
You're back to the zoning law.
You, 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 you have a lot more leeway by going the forty B route versus coming to the planning board, where if you come for site plan approval, then the teeth end up being, the enforcement board is the planning board, and then there are all sorts of requirements that we typically follow and need to follow. We, we won't be doing that in this case, it's more of a, it's a short-circuited process in the technical review. You know, I'm, I'm willing to try to define a, a reduced scope of work for the technical review agent, but it's just to ensure that some of those very basic issues are, are addressed to the.
Okay.
And I, I'm, I'm not a real estate developer, but I would have to believe that incurring those costs upfront could prevent a lot of unnecessary expenditure down the road.
It, it, it's a real, it's a real good point now.
You were not the engineer at all, or excuse me?
I have a que.
Me?
Yeah.
She's a lawyer.
I'm an attorney.
You're an attorney, okay, I wanted to clear that up.
I just want her, I just said, let her, I said, she works with, she's in my office.
Oh, okay.
You kinda chapped this thing through, just from an administrative point of view, no, as a lawyer point of view, I'm administrative, this.
Now, this is, while, I don't know, I don't know if there are any zoning laws that, uh, deal with this issue, but the pocket park that you have.
Mm-hmm.
A flag goes up for me, and this is just, I'm just speaking for myself, to put a, to put an invitation to gather people in a spot directly beside a curb cut is, for lack of a better term, a conflict of interest. You typically, in site design, don't want to say, public, come here, camp yourselves right down beside where cars are coming in and out.
Well, if I was doing that, there'd be a barrier there, for starters, however, I'm probably just gonna tear it out, because I thought it was a nice thing for the town.
It was a.
But since everybody's gonna bitch about it, and, and not you, cause like, somebody else.
I un-bitch, yeah, I like that, actually, yeah.
I said, I'm just gonna tear the damn thing out, I, I had fun with it, and I figured it was private property, and I am, and I'm entitled to invite people, I invite people to my house every year, all, the whole town.
But so let me, let me, but let me finish that, in terms of where I was going with that was this protecting you as well as this process, that if it's not discussed and picked up in such a way that you address a separation, a vertical barrier, some sort of clear design element that separates those two from the traffic, if somebody goes there with their kid, and the little kid walks out.
I don't, I don't, that's.
So, so it, it.
I, I don't disagree with you from a, from a safety point of view, it is private property, it is private property. It is, my liability, my problem, not anybody else's, but, but I, but the plant, no, 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 the plant was to put a fence or put, put a barrier around that.
So, so be it.
But the, uh, it'll probably be torn out, because it's what'll happen, and, um.
It'd be nice for the tenants, or whoever.
It's not even for the tenants, it's, it's, it was my desire to do that for anybody in town.
I know, but it would be a nice.
And it was, in the pocket park, I, I came up, not just for here, I started to think about this for other places in town.
Yeah, it would be friendly.
That's a good idea, I think, sure.
And, uh, it was kind of unique.
When it becomes a condo, it's not your liability anymore, right, it'd be the condo association's.
No, because, yeah, but I, you know what, because of that, I was gonna take a hundred-year lease on it or something like that, it was just, or I was gonna, I wanted to give it to the town, and it sounded like that would get crazy, Peter Dirk, he doesn't wanna maintain anything else, he.
He's up to a snack and a baby.
I've heard, cause I even the park, we wanna do a little pocket park across, it's a pocket lot even, you know, we've talked about this in, in other venues, you know? And, um, I think Peter's afraid he's gonna have to be pulling weeds or something, so. I just thought it was, I thought, and again, another venue, and another time, we've talked about, cause I thought it was, as a citizen, I thought this was a night, not just this project, this here, I thought this might seed it out, you know, scot it out. And I didn't, we didn't do a whole thing with the walls and stuff that I planned on doing, because I pour in concrete, I goes, you know what, put the pad in right now so I have it, that's why I did it. I said, order an extra yard of concrete, cause it's not that much work, and I've been collecting the, um, items that I put there, I've been buying them and collecting them, I've had this whole thing in my mind. And it's nothing to do with that condo, nothing to do with that condo, had it in my mind, and I've been, so I've been buying those things, and I've had them at the farm, and I goes, they're sitting at the farm, nobody's had a chance to enjoy them, I goes, pour that concrete, that's how it came about, and that's why the barrier isn't there, I do not disagree with you about a barrier, absolutely don't disagree with you. Um, but that's, so it's an incomplete pocket park is what it was there.
Yeah.
And, um, and Peter's, Peter's objection, Peter has an objection, that's the only, until I get here with you guys, that was the only objection, until I get here with you guys, it's the only objection.
We're not objecting.
Only objection I had, but Peter, Peter is the one person that's objected to the pocket park, we've talked about it, I talked to him in the coffee shop the other day, and, um, he doesn't wanna, he's afraid we're gonna lose two parking spaces there. Um, because, cause I wanna put the, it fit, I wanted to put, I would put my driveway where it belonged, cause even if it's a one-family unit, I'm putting something in there.
Right.
Because that driveway on the other side's terrible, most houses have, if there's one family in there, they mostly have three cars, you can't park in that crappy little driveway that goes up to the barn.
You can't get out either.
So, um.
You can park anywhere, I thought that would be more space than the other side.
Oh, God, it's only this wide, Tilly.
Just for walking, then, huh?
It's a driveway.
Well, it's wide enough for cars.
It's just for one car.
I remember parking here with my car, cause I used to have a shop in the barn.
It's like a driveway.
And I used to walk it.
Yeah, so anyways, Peter, Peter wants, he, he wants that, he's wanted that to move over, so the curb cut is next to the other curb cut, and so, it's part of the pocket park story, that's why he's, I'm just gonna tear it, I don't, you know what, I don't really care. Sometimes you do, you try and do things that are nice and you just get beaten down, it's like, I just don't care anymore.
I wanna be, I wanna be.
Not, not here, I'm not talking this board, I'm not, no, no, I'm not talking about this board, I'm talking about the pocket park, that's all I'm talking about.
Okay, but even, but even on the pocket park, I hope, I, I wanna, I hope you're not, the, the board likes the pocket park, the board was pointing out the issue of separation.
And, and I, and I agree with you, I was, that's why I explained to you.
Okay, so, so I just wanted to.
I just wanted to explain to you that I just poured the concrete, cause the stuff was sitting up there, and I wanted to get it done, you know? And that's why I, I poured the concrete really quick, that, all of it, all those chairs are sitting in my house, in my yard.
Okay.
So is, is, it, would that be something that you would consider, do you wanna think about it?
I, well, I mean, if, if, if we have to do that, what, the things, the things that, well, another philosophical, you know, these, these reviews things get crazy, you guys think they're nothing to, to, you know, but, I mean, how much is it gonna cost me to have so many reviewers, peer review? You're gonna tell me you want four thousand dollars and we'll take it from there, that's what the answer will be.
Usually no more than what you've paid for an engineer to do this. It's, I think it's pretty much compatible, isn't it, am I wrong?
I'm, 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 I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess, but I'm not the technical review agent and I'm not, you know, but I'm gonna guess that a, a pretty thorough review is, is twenty-five hundred dollars, that would be my guess.
Okay, it seems like there's never any change comes back.
Yeah, no, I.
That's a common thing in town, by the way, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm articulating it, but there's a lot of people that are angry about that, you know, not townspeople, but, and people that get involved, little people in town that have got involved in it, is it, there's kind of a blank check, you know, for these guys. So, I don't mind doing that, if we have to do that, I don't wanna, what I don't wanna have to do is start doing all plans and, you know, constantly getting engineers involved in the stuff and redoing and redoing and redoing, that's what, that's where the money starts to pile up, to pay twenty-five hundred bucks for this guy? I don't, that stuff on that plan, I don't like myself, that was a, that was a plan for the, uh, Board of Health, the septic design, stuff like that.
Right, I, yeah, I'm sure.
I don't like, there's something I don't like in there too, I agree with you, and you're, you're pretty keyed in on what I don't like, and that's the depth of that tank.
I was hoping the town would have bought that property.
Cause I wanted that tank to be flat, I wanted that lot to be, what's that?
I was hoping the town would have bought that.
I'm hoping they will too, why don't you talk them into it, Tilly?
Give me a number.
So, and I, I don't want, I don't, I don't wanna, you know, I, I don't wanna be misleading and I wanna be right up front, but, you know, the technical review agent will come back with a series of items, and some of them will, I'm sure, require these drawings to be modified, or.
If it's a final time, that's okay.
Or, that's the memo of understanding, where you don't spend the money to revise the drawings now, it's an understanding, which is an agreement, that you then take care of that after approvals.
And then it's on the cost.
Isn't that, I, I, to do it one time, to, to, I think the septic, I think, the septic, for another reason, the septic system design should all be redesigned, which would, which that means the money would be spent, because those.
It'll be a raised system, is that my?
No, it's not, I don't want a raised system there, Tilly, that's, that's sandy stuff, that, I don't want this amount in there, that's, that's lousy looking.
Cause you saw just what dominoes. Cause you saw just what dominoes connect, or they have.
I don't wanna allow that system in there. When even in pervious surfaces, I had hoped to put in even pavers, you know, the kind you grow through, type of pavers, you know, through that whole area. Buy it my way, that's how it would be.
It was hard to maintain over time for yourself.
What kind do you call that?
I don't know what they call them, but.
The, the, the block pavers where grass grows up, the grass creep?
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't like hot top, hot top, hot top, I just don't like it.
Um, wha- what if, uh, what if we were to find out, get a, get a, what if, what if the board were to um, send this information off to Larry Graham, who's the technical review, ask him for a price of what he would charge to give us a technical review.
I don't think we have to do that, it, it's irrelevant, cause you're gonna have this price, and then when am I gonna argue with the price? That, that's, you know, I mean, so, I agree with you, we're, we're, I'm willing to do that, uh, willing to have a technical review of the thing done.
I tip my hat to you.
Okay, absolutely.
I tip my hat to you.
The, um, the one of the things, I guess, almost in summary, cause it's getting late for everybody.
We got a lot more to go.
Okay, thank you, I gotta get up three in the morning, I'm gonna play, but, but, um, I flew home just to meet you guys. One of the things that I'm asked all the time, in, in what's going on with it, and I didn't have a answer, and I don't wanna be saying anything bad. So I say, and it's just a compliment here, I want you to realize, I said, listen, nobody in town is going out of their way to stop this project from going. Nobody's, doesn't seem to me like anybody's got an axe to grind, and anybody's doing anything else that, it's just that, there we go, philosophy, yeah. Georgetown regulations, between one board and other things, never seem to be able to, everybody says, geez, they'd like to see something happen, they love this, they would like to have this. The state said they would love this type of project, cause of what it was, and yet all the little, they, it's, you can't seem to get everything together at one time.
You know, there's two sides to all of those problems, and, you know, I hope you're open minded to realize that we have to follow what the, what the town has established.
No, I, and I've been open minded when, every time somebody asks me that, I goes.
You've been in this town a long time.
My comment is, I don't think anybody has, no, nobody's trying to stop it. Yeah, what's?
It's a tricky part of town.
It is a tricky part of town, but you know what, this, this is a tricky, this is a core of the town, it was written ready to fall down.
Well, totally.
It was huge, huge, it was great that you stayed at that building.
With you there.
Could, so, um.
I mean, I said, we do, you know what I'd like to do there?
So, do they have it now?
I'd like to do a bed and breakfast there.
I'm not sure.
But you know what, the regulations don't allow it.
I can print those in full size too.
And, and the zoning can't, the zoning board can't, I mean.
Why don't I give you my information?
Okay.
So that he can contact me if he needs something else or different sizes.
I can live there with thirty percent.
Email them to him, I think.
That would be great.
But I thought, I think a bed and breakfast would be superb.
Alan?
Yeah, I think it would.
So, we, we as a board would, will make a vote then to create an M account for this, where you deposit a check?
Uh, you probably got money in an M account that you took from me, you took from me fifteen months ago, and you never answered me.
What was that?
Where is that?
I asked for approval of Maureen Lane, and you, I gave you four thousand dollars fifteen months ago, maybe, maybe eighteen months ago. I've never said a word about it, I've sat here.
Can you?
Cause I left, I, cause I left, I've had it there for fifteen years, so it didn't matter, then one way or the other, and I sat there, I go, these guys have fifteen years.
So, we're holding, we're holding.
No, you've spent it, I think.
On what?
On, on, I don't know.
Wanted approved at the septic street.
Thing, and you know, you've had all the different people going and coming, so I haven't just gone crazy disrupting.
I don't think we could accept it, we couldn't follow the process.
Okay, let, I.
Tilly, you got four thousand dollars, you spent it, and Larry Graham or whoever it was.
All right, yeah, it's gone.
So, let's, on, on this.
To create an M count in the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars?
Sounds good.
For a site plan review of our, by our technical review agent of the proposed, uh, friendly forty B.
A second, motion's been made, and it's been seconded to authorize an M account, uh, for, um.
Thirty-four East Main.
Thirty what?
Thirty-four East Main Street.
Thirty-four East Main Street.
Plan review, this is, this is.
But this, this is just for a review.
This is for research to, to compose a letter.
To inform the ZB.
For the zoning board, it's not a site plan.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I corrected, I don't think.
He's just, he, all he's doing is, um, establishing the M account to have, so the money is there, and then we will be asking Larry Graham to perform a technical review of this project, um, for, and this is where we, we're gonna need to think about it or, or communicate with Larry, um, it's not about per the zoning ordinance, it's per basic health, safety, welfare, which is some of the leeway that he needs to have when he reviews this.
I think you're right, I think I did say site line review.
That's why, yeah.
Review of proposed plans of the friendly forty B.
Right.
For health, safety, welfare of.
Right.
And, and I think it's important to stipulate that it's not, it's for, for health and safety, it's, it's not.
Basic health, safety.
Basic health, safety, it's not for all the Ts crossed and I stopped.
Right.
So, the motion has been made, and, um, it has been seconded, and it was amended and seconded, and all of those nice things you're supposed to say when this stuff happens like that.
It's getting late, did you notice that?
And, in the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars, um, uh, any more discussion? No more disc-
No, but if there's a balance in that account.
You know what, it might be nice if, it might be nice if this, and you still don't have a review, so I'll, I'll, I'll kinda leave it aside, but it might be nice if you got back to me. I requested to put this on, it's a different issue, I requested to put this on a town meeting for acceptance, and, and that was.
So, then we're discussing something that's not about the motion.
No, 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 she's asked.
I just wanna, I just wanna, yep, I just wanna finish the motion. Um.
Another time.
So, uh, no more discussion, uh, it was seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that takes care of that, thank you, we will, um, we'll, we'll, we'll get this information. I'll talk with you tomorrow, I'm in front of the board doing this, uh, I'll talk with Andrea tomorrow to, to, to coordinate with technical review to get this done as soon as possible, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I think this is a cool thing.
I think it's a great project.
I hope you're successful.
I'm hoping, yeah, I'm hoping it. Look, can I leave with that, though, can you, as a board, can you look at this other, this Maureen Lane, this was an acceptance for town.
The account and see what the file looks like for you.
Well, it isn't just the account, I mean, I gave you the money, because I want, I wanted to prove, I wanted to send to the, I wanted to be, this town, I've had it for fifteen years now.
I'm, so I've just, what is it that you specifically want us to look into about it?
I wanted the town to go to town meeting for acceptance, the road, subdivisions.
Review the file.
Subdivision's fifteen years old.
Okay.
I can, I can tell you what happened with that.
Oh, okay.
Twenty-seven hundred dollars still on your account right now, but I've Graham wrote a very specific letter about why it cannot be accepted, and we've given it to you.
And we, and we, and we, I even remember this, and we, we, we made a specific motion that said, uh, you come back to us when this, when the work's done. I, I remember this.
Well, and would, would you be kind enough to resend your, whatever it is? And you have twenty-seven hundred dollars, can we, can we change it to thirty-five, to, we meant it to?
We can, we cannot, we can close this.
That's a different, yeah, that's just, it's a different animal.
Okay.
So, do you wanna, yeah, well.
And so if you wanna.
Close this account out for twenty-seven hundred dollars.
I, I don't need the twenty-seven hundred dollars, I just don't.
You still want more re-lane accepted?
Well, that's where we were going, I, I want to at least, at least have it.
You must have misplaced the letter, then, we usually send copies to you.
So, we, so we will, so we'll, so we will send the letter again, and then if that money is standing there, and when there's no more work happening with that, that money should be coming back to you, so, okay.
This has been a good meeting for you, huh?
Whole host of problems.
You know what's happening? I'm getting old, and I'm trying to clean up all these things, like, that's been out there fifteen years, I got something else for another property that's, you know, hanging out there.
Not getting old.
Yeah, well, I feel like I am.
You're getting up at three o'clock in the morning.
Thank you very much, Sean.
You're doing okay, Alan.
All right, so let's move on to, uh, old business here, Crescent Meadow Lane. Basically, folks, we found, uh, we found an outstanding invoice, so there is no account closure, so there's nothing to discuss about that tonight. So, it's nine thirty, and we have three items for member of public concern, and this is, this is really the important stuff.
Is there any chance we could take a three minute recess?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, we're gonna take a five minute recess, please. Thank you.
Andrea, I am impressed.
Okay, so we are back on. We have one more item here under Members Concern and there are three items. I'm going to skip the Palmer Lane number one. I'm gonna pass over that. I'll bring that up next time. Could you put that on the next agenda and I'll just bring that up to the board? There's no rush on it. I just don't want to spend energy on talking about it tonight. Items two and three. Item two is the Town Planner position and giving the Planning Board an update on the Town Planner. And then there's also a brief discussion on the Planning Board budget, not to solve it tonight, but a brief discussion about it. They're both interrelated, the budget and the Town Planner's position. So with that said, the Town Planner, as far as updating you folks. So the Board, this is for Bob and for Tilly, Matt, myself and Harry, we had the meeting with John Cashel and Mike Farrell there. So we had the meeting and at that meeting, the conclusion was, the vote was three zero to offer the position to John Cashel and that we were going to then be discussing and working on the salary separate from that offer of the job. That's, so that's what happened. And I would say that the support for John was almost like, feels like the right guy at the right time. Would you agree with that?
Very serious guy and no nonsense and clearly knows how to run a department and seemed like he was ready to get down to business.
So, so that was, that was that meeting. And then last night, I met with the Board of Selectmen to talk to them. What came up in the meeting with John Cashel was he is leaving a ninety thousand, ninety thousand dollar a year job and he, his motivation, he wants to get back home. He doesn't want to commute anymore. He spent a lot of time talking with his wife about what they could do in terms of salaries and so on and so forth. He ended up at saying, "I'm hoping that we can negotiate for seventy-five thousand." I think there was an email or something that went out to that. But, so that was the way he left it, putting seventy-five thousand on the table. And then Matt, myself and Harry, we talked about trying to think out of the box of how to get him more than the sixty-three and change, which is what is currently in the budget. That's where the meeting ended. One of the ideas that has come to light to make this work for John in that he is qualified for the position and that the current salary is not going to get us a person of quality in the market today.
So he's not gonna take?
He would not, he cannot take sixty-three.
Okay.
Correct. Was this idea, was taking, and Andrea has been part of the, this is in, this is with regards to transparency. Andrea has been part of, I've talked with her in terms of, you know, hours needed for the Planning Board. I talked with John on the phone. I said, "Do you need a technical assistant?" He said, "Well," he said, "not a technical assistant, administrative assistant." He said, "I can do most of it." He said, "But things like meeting minutes and there are some items," he said, "you really need someone to do it." So then the idea was, take some of the salary that goes to the Administrative Assistant, which is approximately sixteen thousand, and you take roughly half of it and you move it over into the camp of the sixty-three, four, and you bring the salary up to seventy-two, five. And that leaves some money for a new assistant to do the minutes and little, and little else, but do the real basics that an assistant can do for half that salary. Andrea, in all likelihood, if everything goes well, is gonna be moving to Conservation Commission is, is the hope in February. And so we would find a new assistant that would pick up that smaller scope of work. So sustainable wise, we're not increasing our budget, which is the FinCon's challenge to everybody.
One of the questions that I have based on this budget.
Yeah, now, yeah.
We were talking a lot in theory because we didn't have some of these things in front of us. It was my impression that the sixty-three thousand that we had to offer was, that's all in inclusive of the Affordable Housing Trust portion.
Correct.
When I look at this budget, this says that our allotment for the Town Planner is sixty-four thousand dollars. That's exclusive, if I understand it correctly, of the Affordable Housing Trust's contribution.
No, they, as I recall, Mike explained that to me because I questioned. I guess they, what they do is they transfer what their portion of responsibility. I believe it was at the end of the current, of the year. And they'll take twelve thousand something and transfer free cash.
For us to use.
And, and you know, that's, but the, it's strange. I've never seen it like this. But in our budget, it's listed as sixty-three whatever.
Yep. And that includes the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yeah. And that's, that comes out of that.
Okay. I thought I found the loophole. I was like, I've got.
I was thinking about that.
It's the honest thing, how they, how they do that.
I, 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 I don't wanna confuse the issue, but as I was walking up the stairs, I ran into David Surphus and David Surphus mentioned that the Affordable Housing Trust is now thinking they wanna pull out their portion and hire their own person to work in their place. And if they do that, I think that throws a kibosh into this approach. And I told David that we're gonna have to talk about it then. But so that, that just happened. I don't know where, what that's about or where that's going. But that aside, what I'm hoping to accomplish tonight is to offer John seventy-two, five. I'm, I, I apologize for just putting this out there, but just trying to move it along. To offer John seventy-two, five for the Town Planner's position, that leaves the assistant, whoever that is, with eighty-seven hundred, which comes up to our budget number that we're allowed to have, which isn't increasing our budget past one and a half percent increase for two thousand and eighteen. If John says no to seventy-two, five, there are some people who have said seventy-two, five, you're nickel-dining him. And, and there's something to be said for that.
He's coming down from a significantly bigger number. He, he put that number together on the basis of his personal financial analysis. He didn't say seventy-two, five.
No.
He didn't say seventy-five, maybe seventy-two, five, or he's, you know, seventy-five.
But to be fair, he actually did, at the end of the meeting, he said he could probably go down to seventy-two.
Did he?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was, that was one of his comments, is that he could go down to seventy-two. And absolutely, he's, he's moved a lot, but we're moving a lot too.
Yeah, yeah.
And if that is correct about the Trust not willing to continue to contribute to this, to this position, we're having a hard time finding this eight thousand dollars. Twelve thousand dollars would, would make this a, a position that we can't fill, I think.
Well, twelve, twelve thousand out of the sixty-three puts us into a number we can't even find a Town Planner.
Exactly. And I'll tell you.
That's not necessary.
No, listen, I, I'm too tired. I, I heard myself saying no too loud and I apologize.
You're a nice guy.
No, because I'm just tired. The thing is, we can't go through this same process again. We, we, if we've got somebody who we're really highly confident with, I, I think we've got to figure out a way to make this work. A bake sale or what? But this is nuts. This is, we're, we're not doing the community any favors.
But, but if the Trust pulls their twelve thousand dollars away, we're now looking at trying to hire, even with our increased eight thousand dollars.
Fifty-two, yeah.
Even with our, that brings it down to sixty thousand dollars.
What, yeah, and we have a bigger problem than if that happens.
Well, there's a couple of things that I, that I wanted to say. And the first thing is, my, my opinion, why I didn't choose him as number one was because he had been employed here. I think the year two thousand and one is what I remember. And he only stayed for four months. And he got another job where he's probably working now for that money. And so I didn't feel we should have had, picked him because I wasn't sure. If something better comes along, he's gone. And we, and our, the way our Board is, in the offices, we can't go through this again.
Can I respond to that though? He already has something better. Not better, but clearly more lucrative.
Right.
And, and, and he's giving that up because he wants to come back to Massachusetts. He wants a small town.
He's at that point in his career.
He's, he's at that point in his career where he wants to find something. I don't want to speak for him, but wants to find somewhere that he can finish out his career.
I recall, yes.
And, and so I don't see him as.
Are you concerned about him moving on again?
Yeah. I, I really do. I'm sure he's very capable, but I just don't feel confident. And the other thing is, is that on the, on the computer, Mass Municipal, you can, you can do all kinds of research. And they had, they had a chart on there for the average in Mass is fifty-eight, six ninety. National is sixty-two, oh ninety-seven for a planner, okay? Groton, they listed it seventy-two, six, which Groton is a lot more people. The state, if you work for Planner for the state, they only pay sixty-seven, seven. Cambridge pays sixty-four, one hundred and fifty-three. Brookline sixty-five, four thirty-eight. Mass Municipal pays their own planners sixty-two, four ninety-seven. Pioneer Valley in the re, is a region planner, forty-five thousand. And this is another reg, regional. Massachusetts, forty-two, eight. So I, my thought is.
I don't know. I, I, I'm sure those numbers are accurate the way you've taken them off. I would need to see though, more of a description of those Town Planners and those positions.
Well, you can look on the computer for Mass, pull up Mass Municipal and, and they have job listings.
What, what I'm saying is that, and I didn't have this with me, but Mike gave us a listing of the Town Planners and what they were paid in Massachusetts. And they gave a low and a high. And the numbers, for example, you know, went anywhere from average of a low of sixty and change to a high of over a hundred thousand. So I question those numbers in terms of it being an apples to apples comparison. And that's why I'd wanna see those and I.
Well, I think.
Certainly something in Pioneer Valley. I mean, in Western Mass, they'll be paid a lot less.
Yeah, right. Sure. But at Cambridge, the population there?
And I, I.
I would wonder though about what those rules are.
Well, that's, that's, but the thing is, is that.
Brookline would not pay its Town Planner sixty-two thousand, guaranteed.
But those, those that are paying less, they have a director, they have one person to do just minutes, and then they have an assistant. And I think in my, I've stated this several times. I think it's unfair for the town to be paying the salary of a planner to do clerical position. We're, it's not, to me, cost efficient. And, and yeah, you can go to the Finance Board, but I'd like to hear what they say about that because to me, that's not good, good managing.
To, to that, I'm glad you said that. The, the goal or the plan is to, in going to the Board of Selectmen last night to explain to them this and update them on the Town Planner and put in front of them this as a conceptual idea of how to, to engage this Town Planner. Their, their response was, Gary was absolutely supportive. The Board in general basically said, "You need to go to also Finance Committee and run this by them. And if they support it, then we're gonna support it." So that has to happen. This, this idea needs to go to Finance Committee as well. The idea tonight, I think, is for us to hopefully come to agreement among ourselves that as an idea, this is, is, is the Board's on.
I just can't support that.
Yeah, I think it's a reasonable, I think it's a reasonable approach.
I just can't support doing the assistant, the planner. We had that. We experienced that. And we didn't get any, any amendments. We didn't get any regulation changes. We didn't get anything because that person was doing someone else's work. And it should have been clerical doing that. And he was doing it. I mean, that's just my thought about it. It's not, we want him to really do planning.
Yeah, we do. I agree.
I want somebody to run the department. And if, and, 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 and look, I, you're self-employed. You know that. For me, it's, when you're running, when you're running your shop, you do what you gotta do. And if that means you gotta make a photocopy, that means you gotta make a photocopy. And if that means you gotta take out the trash, you gotta take out the trash. And.
I was a software developer for many years and.
No doubt.
I didn't have admin. I was admin.
No doubt if, if they're not in there, sure, somebody's gotta be in the office.
So for me, the principle, the, the, the first thing is getting a, a good planner in place and making sure that they're, they're satisfied. And as between having a, a, a really good planner and a really good assistant, we, we need to have the planner taken care of first. And then the assistant is, is, is the, has to, has to come second. Because otherwise, we have a, well, we have what we've had for the last year. The shop, it's not functioning. And.
Well, how would you feel if, if the planner is there and, and there is nothing done that we feel should have been in our goals? And he's going to tell you, "I don't have the time." How are you going to feel?
Well, I'm gonna, I, I, I'm gonna suggest this, that, that the, the, the job description that is currently in place for the Town Planner, the way he's used, there is not enough money to pay that person the amount of time they would have to put in. The job description is too big. And one of the things that I tried to do with Heidi from day one was to get a list of all of the tasks that needed to be done and then to establish a priority of those lists. And then say, "I've got X amount of hours. I can do this priority, this priority, this priority. I might be able to get to this." And then with that in hand, come to the Board and say, "Hey, Board, this is what I've come up with in terms of managing the office with the time I have. Things I can do. Are you guys on board with it? And if not, then we'll move the priorities around. But we're never gonna get it all done."
I, I would love to have, you know, a, a really good planner and three assistants that they could, that he never touches a piece of paper, quite frankly. That would be, that would be phenomenal. But we, we just don't have that budget and we, we, we never will.
But to, to do, to do filing, to do, I mean, the job description for the assistant is, is this long?
Well, you were talking though about having someone on a much more part-time basis, right?
Yeah, it would be half the, it would be half the amount of time that is currently, basically, plus or minus, it would be half the amount of time that the, that the current assistant puts into the office. And that time would first go to meeting minutes. And then second, to being a basic presence in the office on a limited basis to do those real basic things.
And Andrea, it sounds, it sounds like, for, it, it sounds like you concurd that that's kind of a reasonable approach. Is that correct?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't ask her if the part-time would work. And that's a great question to get that feedback. But with, if you took the salary and cut it in half and you did half the amount of time, do you think you could get first, the meeting minutes done?
Yeah. Well, if there was a planner.
And if there was a planner and, and.
Yeah.
Okay. And then there would be enough time to spend a little bit of time in the office doing some real basic things?
So we would say you're cutting in from eight, for fifteen hours a week to seven and a half.
Yeah.
So tonight I got here at six.
Do you need to do minutes by coming to the meeting? Just couldn't someone?
And I thought, I was wondering if maybe someone would come once a month just to stay familiar with people.
Well, the, the, you don't have, the meeting minutes can be done by, someone watches the tape, sits at home and does it.
But, I mean, whether she, whether someone sits here and watches it or sits at home and watches it, you're still paying them to watch it.
Yeah, but, but you're not paying them to sit here and then go home and do it.
Yeah.
It's double we're paying.
So you, I mean, I, so I guess, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but I guess what I'm hearing is that the meeting minutes could be covered with a, with a part-time assistant. That was John's requirement.
If we shuffle the.
And then there's a little bit of extra time. And then we need to still go through that exercise with John if he does accept, if this does work out, of establishing what we expect him to be doing and having agreed upon scope.
But I think we need to find out from the Trust, their, their position, because I, I think this is all a moot conversation if they're gonna take their twelve thousand dollars.
If they're playing ball, yeah.
So I agree with that. But could we wrap this up and say that as far as this discussion with the Town Planner, that what I'm hearing, and FYI, so I, I talked with Harry on the phone to get clarity around his budget twice today. And I also asked him and I said, "Would you be okay with me sharing this with the Board?" And he said, "Yes." He fully would support a seventy-two, five offer in going about trying to come up with money out of the assistance budget. So whether it's seventy-two, five or seventy-five hundred, I guess what I'd like to, I guess what I'm thinking is that there's, there's four members that would be in favor of this conceptually. There's one member that is not in favor of this conceptually, of trying to make this work this way, of this kind of number.
Well, I, I appreciate that. I would certainly like, like it to work. But at the same time, when we did our legal ad, we had it right down to the dollar. We didn't have an ad that said fifty thousand to seventy thousand. We had exactly what's in our budget line.
And how many applications?
And he knew what it was when he came here. Did anybody else negotiate with him prior to your guys' meeting?
No, this just all came up. This is all new information. This is all new information. So, but I, so I understand. So I'm comfortable with just. I'm not gonna change my position. And I think you, and, and, and you sound pretty convinced in yours. And I think that's fine. And all I'm doing is just trying to move it on that, so.
I think we should run another ad, honestly. If, if in fact, it's gonna be, if you go to the Finance Board, you get approval for seventy-two, fifty?
Yeah.
Five, I think you should run another ad. We, we're gonna get a heck of a lot more applications with that amount of money than we did for the sixty-two.
Okay. And, and then.
That's how I'm looking at it.
And then there's another, then there's another three months of not having a Town Planner.
That's a steep price to pay. It's a steep price to pay.
It would be a steep price if he gets another offer and takes off. That's another risk.
I mean, if he gets hit by a bus, I mean.
So, okay, so I, I, I say, so what I'm trying to do is.
To make a motion to offer, you're looking for more motion.
Or, or it doesn't even have to be a motion.
But, so here's my only concern.
But we need to then find out about Affordable Housing Trust. And, and that's the second part. So what I, what I would like to do on the issue, and then we need to talk about the budget, very briefly. So what I'm hearing is that there's, there's four Board members that are in favor of approaching this conceptually this way, regardless of, we'll figure out the number later, seventy-two to seventy-five. And that there's one member that is not. So that the Board would support going in this direction. And I wanna be able to share that with John, that we're trying to make this work out. With that being said, now, point two, we gotta find out immediately from the Affordable Housing Trust if that's what they plan to do. Because that's a whole new animal.
And the Finance Board immediately.
The Finance Board, Mike is meeting with the Finance Board tonight. And I, you know, I'll, we'll have to meet with him in the next meeting. Same, agree, agree. Budget. So Harry sent this budget and what I, what is the goal of this? I think Harry's numbers check out. They've been confirmed. And he has an FY seventeen budget for ninety-six, five. And he has an FY eighteen budget for a hundred and one and change. And we're gonna have to defend it by, in going to the Finance Committee. And I don't think we're gonna get the F eighteen budget at a hundred and one. But the numbers are all legitimate. And I would support submitting this now to the Finance Committee as our first budget. And if you guys are okay with that, otherwise, we need to have a meeting to talk about the numbers in detail.
Personally, I feel that you and Harry took the ball and ran with this. And I think that that's phenomenal. And I think I'm, I'm, I'm willing, I'm very happy to defer to the jury.
I'm not, I, I'm, I'm comfortable, I'm very, very comfortable with these numbers that are down here, that they're accurate. I confirmed them with Mike also. I triple confirmed them. And, and, and it's not to pressure. If you don't wanna submit it tonight, I say, that's fine.
I talked with Mary and I, if I remember, I lost the paper, I guess. I asked her what was, what was remaining in last year's budget that went back to the free cash.
Oh.
Okay. And I think she, if I'm right, eighteen hundred dollars out of our expenses came, went back.
Yeah.
So we're pretty much, the expense part, I have my doubts on changing. The expense part, I have my doubts on changing any of that, like, it looks like Harry did a good deal of work.
Yeah.
Well, there were some things that are that are going up because they have to.
I can explain them to you if you want, that the the three numbers that went up. Are line item five, three, four, one telephone, there there's a new item in five in FY eighteen for four hundred and fifty dollars, and that's because of the new communication system. Uh, that Georgetown in the phone system that they're now using, and the way that they have broken up the monies before that figure. Was shared by the town in communications, i.e. if you go back to FY sixteen, you'll see seven fifty. Long story short, the four fifty is not a number generated by us, or we haven't, it it is what it is, it's being divided up differently now, based on a different system. Of telephone for the town, so it like, it is what it is, it's a new service.
It's a direct chargeback.
It's a, and it's a new service, it's nothing we're doing. The increase from sixty-eight to ninety-one, nine-one, which is the biggest increase, that has to do with pictometry. And that, um, once every five to six years.
I'm sorry, I don't see, I don't see.
Line item.
Fifty-three sixty?
Fifty-three sixty. If you go over to FY seventeen and FY eighteen, those are the two years.
Operating off, I think you're operating off a different document.
Yeah, 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 this is.
This was what was in our packets.
Okay, this was, okay, this is a different, um. Yeah, th- this is, this is the one that um Mike did, and his numbers were incorrect.
Okay.
And this has been adjusted, so, it's, okay, it's too late, it's too late to be talking about this anymore. Um, I guess what I'd like to do.
About what?
Do you wanna keep talking about these numbers?
Are there deltas, if you can address deltas in there, I don't need to see the page.
I don't want, I had, I gave you the wrong amount, so, I don't want you to leave before I straighten that out.
Okay.
Right now, Mary told me that the salary has uh eighteen thousand in it, because.
That's what I learned.
Okay, so, because we didn't have a.
Town planner.
A town planner.
Right.
And the expenses are one thousand eighty-four. We we just signed quite a lot of money today. In their, in our invoices, so that's gonna be different now. And um. She said that um the total that we have now is eighty thousand oh forty-two.
Mm-hmm.
For our our uh total budget.
Eighty oh four-two is the total uh salary and wages, that's that's the town planner and assistant.
All right.
Can I, can, just one quick question, on on his, uh, and it sounds like this is not a correct document anymore, but. There were two line items for travel and mileage, five, seven, one, zero, and five, eight, five, oh. One for six hundred and one for a thousand, I was just wondering why there were two separate.
Five, eight, five, oh, um, should be equipment.
Ah, well, that explains that then.
And that should be zero. Um, so, under other purchases for service, um FY seventeen. Is uh, which is the budget that we're under right now, was sixty-eight hundred, that's what's plugged in. What is projected for FY eighteen, which is what we would submit to the finance committee, is nine thousand one hundred ninety-one. That's that's a delta of approximately twenty-four hundred dollars. So, that delta is generated because of pictometry, which happens once every five to six, seven years. Where the town updates all its maps based on new pictometry, and you divide, and that cost is approximately six thousand. When, every time you do it, and you divide that, and you can pay for that over two years. So that's why you go from six and you add three thousand to it roughly, to get up to the nine. And you'll see the nine ends up also for FY nineteen, those are the two years of dividing it, and then it goes back to the six, eight. What Mike said, when I wa- talked about these numbers with him, is he said, you present it like that. Uh, and the finance committee, it's, they may say, look, you're not doing pictometry this year. But that's, we present it first, so that was.
We already have a contract though for that. I think we're logged in.
Be that as it may, can come, can say, and.
Okay.
Take to, you know, take the.
That's a great. Yeah, we we.
Yeah, Harry would know for sure, but I think there's a contract.
Um, and then, um. The other delta is the office supplies, which. Um, for whatever reason, for this year, Howard plugged in seven fifty, and that's the number that's there. And it goes up to seventeen, set one thousand seven hundred and fifty for next year, which we would put in our budget. And um, that's an increase of a thousand, and that um. Is a more realistic number of of what would be required, the seven fifty was was, we're not sure where Howard came up with that or why, and so. You have three numbers that are new that have increased, you've got four fifty for telephone, not by us, you've got the pictometry, another three thousand, and then you've got this. More realistic um office supplies, so there's a change of thirty-eight hundred. What that does is that means we jump from today's budget of ninety-six thousand five hundred. To a budget in next year of eighteen to a hundred and one thousand five hundred. That's a five point two percent increase, the town is only looking for a one point five percent increase, so.
The eighteen thousand as an increase request for you to go, do you have that number? To go to the finance board just for this year. Has to be eighteen thousand dollars.
Oh, to grab that money?
Yeah.
Um, uh, no, I didn't uh think of that, um, I didn't put that in here, um, but but that's, that's something that.
If it, next year, that would be the eighteen thousand. Um, double, so that would be, they're thinking that it's twice, you need thirty-six. Thirty-six thousand more, and then you would need, if afford- affordable housing. You know, doesn't wanna chip in that, that's. But that wouldn't change this budget because we already count on affordable, it just makes a difference with the finance board.
So, may- maybe, maybe this, maybe 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 let's end the meeting like this, it's five past ten. Um, I would suggest that we s- we've talked about the numbers, there seems to be a general understanding of what we've talked about.
Tilly lost me with the eighteen thou- I'm sorry, you lost me with the eighteen thousand.
Right. This was eighteen thousand that we did not spend.
I'm considering.
So, we can pull that money back for the for next fiscal year?
But that's not a sustainable issue.
Sure, but it's, I mean, it's nice, nevertheless.
Correct, but we don't wanna put the town in a position, or John, if at all possible.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so that's, but yes.
Yeah, you you, well, my figure was was considering the town assistant as well. So, I wasn't changing any of that, so if we kept the assistant. And we increased his salary, the whole budget would have to be increased by eighteen thousand dollars. Okay, right now.
Mm-hmm.
Right now.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, next year, when you ask for that increase, you're gonna have to do more than this, 'cause this is only for if he gets on board.
And that's the unsustainable.
February, March, April, May, so you need four, maybe five months.
And and that's what the, um, that's what the the other department in town did, where they. They took money and they hired this new person. Um, for this year, because with this extra money that they had, gave them the salary raise, but it's not in the budget for the future.
Next year.
And I don't think, I don't think we retain that eighteen thousand, I I think that goes to a free cash.
I think, yeah. Whether finance committee wants and will give it back to us or not, I have no idea.
Spent less. You know.
Well, they have like forty-four hundred, I think is what you told me, right now because of the uh town uh the planner. Not being on board, so.
So, we so we spent eighteen thousand less than we budgeted for, but good on us, but that doesn't mean we get that eighteen thousand.
You wanna be fair and, you know, hopefully know what's gonna happen next year, you don't want somebody leaving a job. Working for us, and then next year, they say, forget it.
I think you're talking about two separate things, I I think.
All right, mediator, go ahead and explain what I'm talking about.
But I think, I think this, I I think, I think, um. We're not, we don't, we don't need to resolve this tonight.
No.
Um, what I'm suggesting is that we've had a good discussion about the numbers. Um, and I think we can get updated numbers versus this, and we should um have another discussion. Hopefully finalize it at the next planning board meeting. We're not gonna have that big of an agenda either, then, I don't think, so, how was that for everybody?
Sounds good.
I just need one more signature before we close the meeting, I have two board members, I just need three on the staples, bill only, so it was either Tilly or Rob, somebody missed it.
All right, I I missed, I missed them all, I missed them all.
You signed, you signed everything but staples.
All right, so do I have a motion to?
I move re-turn.
Great.
Motion of mid, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. I've seen worse.
Oh, totally.